Fourth, 2024, and we're meeting at Danvers Town Hall. Thank you all for being here. And our agenda, which was posted publicly on August 22, says that we'll start our meeting by looking at the minutes of our August 15 meeting. But we have a number of guests here tonight. So if you all don't mind, why don't we put that to later on so we can let people speak? And then move on if they have other things to do tonight. As we discussed at our last meeting, I sent letters to the Select Board, the Finance Committee, the Town Clerk, and the Town Moderator, asking if they could attend tonight to join us and assist us in our discussion of the Town Meeting Act. I know that some of the people who are here actually are perfectly capable and welcome to discuss both acts if they like. The Town Clerk, I met with her in person, actually, around the 27th or so of August. She couldn't come to tonight's meeting because yesterday was an election. There's a lot of post-election stuff that she's working on. But she will come to our next meeting. And I think you'll find it really interesting. And I'll get into that once our visitors have spoken. Before I move forward, does any of you have any questions or comments or things you want to mention for tonight? John Jaworski left something at home. He'll be right back. So we're just looking for Mary Beth. Mary and Mike is here remotely.
Mike, hopefully that will...
Hey, everybody.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, everybody.
So I was just saying we're going to go a little bit out of order because we have some guests. Dan Bennett, did you want to start? Why don't you come up to our podium and just let everybody know your name and your role?
Good afternoon or evening as it is. First of all, let me start and thank you all for volunteering to do this job. It's been 30 years since we've looked at this document. And I don't know if the matter of housekeeping or if it would really be with forensic review. I am Dan Bennett, Chairman of the Select Board. And I'm very concerned about one particular item. And that's the residency requirement for the town manager.
So you're speaking, I'm sorry, Dan, interrupt, but you're speaking about the Town Manager Act at this point?
Yes, I am. So the Town Manager Act requires that the manager resides in the town of Danvers. Now, that sounds good. It's been practical for years. But realistically today, with the cost of housing, the average house in Danvers sold in the last six months was $776,000. There are currently only 10 houses on the market, single families. Only four under that 776 number. The other six are well-known, living in Danvers. So if we're going to require a manager to live in Danvers, we're going to have to be conscious of paying him a rate that he can afford to buy a house in. Because I would assume anybody that sells a house and moves to Danvers is giving up a low-interest mortgage. And they're going to have to take on north of 6%. So it's going to limit the pool candidates that will be able to draw. It will be very limited. Now, how to resolve that? You still do the job you've been charged to do, which is look at all those documents and come to town meeting in May with a plan. We can't wait till May to activate town manager candidates. If the town manager leaves, and it's still an if, we'll vote him on one. So I hate to put this pressure on you tonight, but we need to be conscious that the manager's leaving in six weeks. We need to hire a proven firm to get applications. They need to show that Danvers can afford to pay you what you might need if you move to town. Or eliminate the residency requirement. And that will increase the pool of candidates for us to choose from.
Well, if I may, may I ask a question, group's dialogue back and forth here? I don't believe that we, as a committee, have the authority to change the current act. All we can do is recommend a town meeting, which is not till May.
But we have a special town meeting February 2nd planned. So there's your timeframe. I need something...
What day?
February 3rd, I'm sorry, January 3rd. The Board of Select needs an article in January so we can put on the warrant and close the warrant in time for the special town meeting if you decide to recommend changing the residency requirement. Now, are you going to do everything? That's up to you. Can we just a few housekeeping and continue to work through the spring into May to finalize the documents? That's your decision. That's not mine. I just tell you, if we're going to enter new candidates, it's going to be a lot easier, a lot better for the community if we don't have a residency requirement. Those are facts. Now, if we wake up tomorrow and the manager's not leaving, we can wait till May. But I can't guarantee that.
Go ahead, John.
Just in terms of the logistics of a change, it's not up to the town even. Even if the town meeting approves, it needs to go through the legislature.
It does.
So is it realistic to think that that could happen in the timeframe for an immediate job search?
It's going to be difficult.
Yeah.
February gives us time to interview. Attorney General can take 90 days, approved or not. It's certainly asked our state legislators to put a rush on it, knowing that we want to get somebody hired and then position sometime in April. That's the goal.
But you'd need it before you solicit applicants?
It's all we can solicit. If town meeting approves it, it'll be subject to approval of the Attorney General.
Okay.
But at least then they know that they will work on this. And I can't imagine the Attorney General would deny it at the town meeting body of ownership.
Mary Beth, did you have something?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Dan. And I understand what you're saying. But I'm trying to speak to the mic. I'm not trying to make... However, I would hate to rush the process because we might need to hire right now. As a select board, could you not make a special accommodation if... For the residency, so say you advertise, people apply, someone's like, I can't find any housing. Could you, as a select board, make a special accommodation that they don't... You know, until they find housing, they could live outside? And that's fine.
That's a great question. I've already pondered that. Although, I have to be careful. I can't do anything until we know what the manager's doing. But my thought process is, we have an interim where we hire somebody subject to the change coming down the road. That's a possibility.
Yeah. I guess I just want to voice, I'm just a little bit more concerned now. Like, we have a time limit to get the residency part done. I understand why you're bringing it forward. And I know it is something we'll look at. But again, I myself have just concerns about rushing it for a special town meeting in February.
Then we ask in a one piece, to be honest.
Yeah.
That's your charts.
And a special town meeting, though, can be called at any time. So February 3rd is a timeline that you would like, but it's not necessarily one that is etched in stone, right?
It's penciled in by the planning department.
Correct. So I just wanted to make that clear.
But would we move it out? We can't move it.
Well, I think, Dan, this charter review, I know for town meeting, I think a charter review, once we're done and we present to town meeting, could, this probably should be a special town meeting so that there's enough time to discuss everything in depth as much as we can. Because if you lump it into a town meeting, a regular one, and we have all of this, as we all kind of know, by the time we get to Article 33, everyone just wants to get out. And the debate or the conversations tend to die off. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just saying that we may want to consider that this be a special town meeting.
Absolutely.
Listen to some of the private conversations. We are well aware that it's a big lift for town meeting in May. And we're prepared to ask for an amendment for a later date if you need it, if it makes sense. But I can't tell you what's going to happen now.
Well, I don't think we need to get too bogged down in process right now. Because we, because as you say, we don't know. Will there be special town meeting? Won't there? Will there be an immediate need for a change in this section or not? But I know from the time this committee was first even formed that that residency requirement was one thing that I've heard from a lot of people. I don't know if any of you have. It doesn't surprise me. It's an issue. It's just come to a head in a way we weren't expecting initially. But I certainly appreciate your coming and bringing it to our attention. Do any of the other committee members have any questions of Dan? Dan, do you have any particular comment on the Town Meeting Act, which creates the eight precincts in town, et cetera, talks about?
It's up to you to decide what form of government we're going to have. Probably stay with a strong town manager.
And a representative town meeting.
Right. That's your choice. The main case in the status quo, all recommend changes. And I have thoughts, but that's why you're here.
Okay. John?
I'm not sure, Dan, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm looking at the warrant article here. And it says, recommended revisions to the act, which in my mind means that generally, we are going to have the same form of government. And we may tweak some certain things. We might bring certain things up to date. But we all are not in the business of going to a mayoral system or anything of that nature.
I don't suggest that, but it said you're permitted to discuss it.
But I think that's really important to clarify.
Yeah, I think, John, that actually I took our marching orders to actually consider the two acts, which incorporate what the former government is. And if we decided, because we talked about this at one of our first meetings, if we decide that representative town meeting doesn't work for us anymore, let's talk about something different. I think that that is within the realm of the things we could recommend to town meeting. I've kind of shared with you.
That was my understanding when I was asked to be on this committee as well.
We don't want to handcuff you. It's a broad corral out there, but you have to decide which direction to go in during every town meeting.
It's one of the reasons that we had our speakers from the Mass Municipal Association to talk about different forms of town governance. I kind of view it all as being on the table. But that's something we can certainly discuss and mull over. I think your mission tonight was really to talk about that residency issue. Okay. Thank you very much. I don't mean to cut you off if you don't want to.
I just want to say, if it wasn't push or shove, I wouldn't have been here to speak to that point.
Thank you.
And I want to let you folks do your job. Please consider those comments.
Thank you. Thanks very much. And now, I had invited, and I, on behalf of this board, not personally, members of the Select Board, the Finance Committee, the Town Clerk, Town Moderator to come. The Town Moderator responded by email in something that I've attached to the packet. It's like third from the last page in the packet. And her response, the Town Moderator, this is Pat Fraser, felt that she appointed this committee, and she may be the moderator when any of proposals we make are presented to town meeting. So she felt it wasn't appropriate for her to come and share her thoughts with us. That she also says that she believes her positions are a matter of public record, generally supportive of a strong town manager, and an unsuccessful proponent in the past of eliminating the residency requirement. And she says that she would encourage this committee to give another look at giving the Select Board more flexibility in hiring a manager. You know, who knew it was going to come to be a live issue so quickly? So anyway, so that's her thoughts. As I mentioned, the Town Clerk couldn't be here, but she would love to come next time. And I met with her, and she pulled out this map from behind a door in her office and was showing me how the precinct lines are drawn and a chart that shows how it's drawn. As you know, we have eight precincts in town. And they take, the state is very involved in setting up our precincts to reviewing to make sure everything's correct by statute. But they take the number from the census of the residents of the town and divide it by eight. And then every precinct has that number plus or minus 5%. And that's how they tried to set up the precincts. It's really fascinating. So she has a lot she can explain to us about that process. But let's turn to, are there any other members of the Select Board here? I don't know everybody, so excuse me.
Mike Bean.
Mike, would you, do you have something you would like to share with us? You should probably come here so that we're being televised. We're very important.
I hope that I, Michael Bean, nice to see everybody. Thank you for letting me come and talk. I don't know if some of the things that are on my mind are in the scope of what you both feel like. So I don't know. Can I just say?
Sure, please do.
Throw it out there? Make me go wait for the truck? All right. I, on the other hand, do think the town manager should live in town. Just so you have skin in the game, just kind of be here with us. I don't know. It's just a raw feeling I have, you know? It's that simple. A couple of the things, I think that the town manager should issue a little bit more authority to the Select Board. Not, I don't mean authority, but I'd like to be able to maybe assist in when he's going to hire people or she is going to hire people for management of different departments. If we could go through the resumes with them. And I think it would create more balance. So why not hire brothers and sisters and cousins? And I must suggest that now, just saying it. Just putting it up there, the way it is. When it comes to bids on work being done in town by vendors and contractors, again, I think the Select Board should have some view of that so that we can have an offer, an opinion. Maybe, you know, we don't have an opinion when it comes to a certain situation, but at least it's just more eyes. I guess I'm just thinking more opportunity to look at some of the things that are happening rather than find out after the fact. And yes, I do want to see it's put more on the Select Board. And I do understand that, you know, town manager who works in town hall, this is their full-time job and they're busy. Takes a lot of hours, and we come in as a Select Board, not even part-time. So I don't mean to disregard any of that. I certainly understand our role, I guess, just as a town resident. I want to do as much as I can to try to help, offer a little bit of opinion on things, that's all. And also, major department changes. Departments being merged together. Again, I think that I'd like to see a review with the Select Board. Just to offer, again, some balance as to how that might happen or if it should happen. That's about all I think I'm willing to say right now.
Those are big things. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I may have a question?
Yes, absolutely.
One of the issues that came up last meeting was representation by the people in Danvers. Is a selectman, if I'm correct, are not elected by any particular precinct or anything? Is that correct?
Right.
They're across the board. Correct. Okay. So if citizens wanted to get, make an issue, for example, in Precinct 2, you don't represent Precinct 2, you represent everybody. So how would a person, let's say in my precinct, Precinct 2, how would they get their voice so that some action could be taken about an issue that might happen in any precinct throughout the town? And that person they would speak to would have a vested interest in following up with that particular issue? How would that happen in Danvers?
So currently, you can speak to your town meeting members of Area 2, right? Section 2?
Yeah.
And you want them to seek out your Select Board members or whatever committee that you need to try to...
So that would be the process that that would happen?
Yes.
They would have to seek that person out, the person who's part of it? Okay, great. Thank you.
That's the way I understand it, too.
Okay, thank you.
Any other Select Board members?
Hi, everybody. Maureen, for now, I'm a Select Board member. First of all, thank you for all your time and effort to do this. It's a very heavy task to take over. And also, you know, time of year, it's very tough, too. So I do also believe that town manager should have, should live in, should have residency. Because I feel the same, too, that if you live here and embrace this community, live here all the time. I kind of stand as the Select Board, Bennett, says about crisis housing and things like that, too. But wherever they sell, they're probably going to make a profit. They don't have to probably buy. They could rent somewhere. So I would be in favor of having people, I mean, please look at the residency requirement here, keep it here. I was looking at some of the sections, you know, where it said, like, Section 7 about that we can have expenses for the selectmen, board experts, councils, and such expenses. I've seen in any year, the sum of $10,000 or larger sums as may be appropriated. We need to look at those numbers because what it was back 30 years, whilst now, could be a little bit more.
Excuse me, Maureen, is this the Town, the Manager Act or the Town Meeting, Manager?
Yes. And I also like transparency, or transparency, which we have found work on. Dan's finding that, too. We want to know what's coming before us ahead. Not just a couple of days. To really have a good grip of reading the materials a little bit more than just the weekend. So I think that's very important. Because if there's questions, as Steve has already said, just ask. But sometimes with work demands and feeling demands, you know, we need a little bit more time with that. But other than that, I think you're all doing a great job. Thank you. I think this is very important that we do look at this.
Thanks very much, Maureen. Appreciate it.
That's good.
Sure.
That last point that you made about having materials, I don't know what you're referring to.
Yeah, we can get the agenda sometimes sent to us. And what we want to do is, I mean, Steve seems to know, the town manager, I should say, Steve, the town manager has a lot of power. So when the residents come to us and say, can we do this? We really can't, as the Select Board member would be said, take any recommendations on hiring or anything like that. So I think that when the agenda comes through, that we could be a little bit more transparent. We could, Select Board, maybe also work with the town manager better moving forward on what we want to see on the agenda, too, not what we want to see on the agenda.
So you're talking about the agenda for the Select Board?
Yeah. We want a lot of transparency. We want more people to come, you know, a lot of million faces. So if people come, we want this to be a welcoming community. So we need to make Danvers more walkable.
So I have one question.
Make sure you have a mic, point.
So we've been talking about how Danvers has a strong town manager. And what I've heard from you and Mike is that maybe you'd like it to be, I think we never really decided if it was called a weak town manager. But something where a weak town, so we have a strong, and we don't really know the term, of like a manager that has less power.
Yeah.
But it's, yeah, but yeah. So do you think that that would be a better way for Danvers to be run? Where the town manager doesn't have as much power?
Yes. I think, personally, I think the board of selectmen should have a little more power than the town manager.
Okay.
Because it's pretty much, this is the way it's been being.
Just to follow that to the next step, what I think I'm hearing from you is that you would like the Select Board to have a seat at the table in these discussions. Hiring, I think the other topic that was mentioned was major departmental changes. If you take it to the next phase where the final decision is made, what would you like to see happen in terms of the Select Board's ability to be part of the actual decision? Versus being asked for your opinion, whereas you are not now asked, if I understand correctly? Are you hoping to also, it would be sort of more of a committee-type vote with the town manager as a member of that committee with sort of an equal vote to the Select Board? Or how do you envision the actual decision-making?
That's a way of putting it. What I'd like to see, like you said, is if we had a committee, and it's not his ultimate decision, but if we had the committee and everybody voiced their concerns and went through everything, I think that would be better for everybody in general. Like, I don't, the Select Board member, Dean, it said, you know, I don't want to say friends or whatever. We want qualified people, right, in that town. So if we get, it's almost like everybody jumps in and hops out instead of just one person making the decision. You know, we're not, we're not in a grade, we're going to disagree. We want that, right? So I think it's better to have an active and then having everybody, having a top couple. And then I think that would work out best.
Thank you.
Sorry, can I just ask a follow-up? So just, I just want to clarify this. So there were hiring decisions, and your view would be the Select Board and the town manager, and there would be a vote in that committee? That would essentially be a committee vote on that hiring decision? Is what you're...
Yes. That's what I'd like to see.
Hi, Maureen. Thank you so much. I'm not being rude again. I just want to be near the mic here. So from what I'm hearing from you and Mike, part of what I'm hearing you folks saying, I guess, communication, being informed. As a Select Board, you folks hire the town manager. And I would assume you're managing the town manager. So with that being said, like you said, Mike, you said, anytime you have any questions. And that's why I think you would, everyone should, on the board, take that opportunity. You have a question, reach out to the town manager or through your chair and say, would like a little bit more information on this? I think to the current town manager would be more than happy to entertain that or even ask for a meeting with him. But again, the Select Board is his manager. So I think just taking a little bit more, I don't want to say control, but assertiveness, just to be like, keep us informed. And thank you for the information, like, that you're expressing about the hiring decisions. But when you hire a town manager, you're entrusting them. They have the experience to hire folks under them. And then we have an HR department that has at least three folks that are also hiring. I understand what's being said, but again, I think there are roles for the Select Board, and then there are roles for the employees of the town. So I'm just, I understand what's being said. But I also, there's kind of a, there's a process, right, currently? So those are just some of my comments. Thank you.
Sally, may I make one comment?
Yes.
I didn't mean, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to haunt you from behind. I just, I just wanted to second the point that Maureen brought up about Section 7 with that figure of $10,000, which is a, you know, 30, 35-year-old figure. I think part of the agenda that we should have as a committee that we try to inflation-proof these bylaws or these sections. And rather than pick a flat figure... these bylaws or these sections, and rather than pick a flat figure, pick a, pick something that's, you know, a percentage of the budget. I'm just talking off the top of my head, you know? That select board could spend up to, you know, 0.01% of the value of the town budget or something like that, so that it doesn't have to be reviewed periodically.
Thank you. That's a good point.
I agree.
Okay. Anybody else here with questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming. Now, any other select board members? So shall we move on to the FinCom? One of my all-time favorites. Do any members of the FinCom like to get up and, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yes. You saw me.
Thank you, Sally. I'm going to come up before the chair, I ask for permission, because that's what you have to do. Finance committee, get the permission, chair. Always follow that rule. But the reason that I wanted to get up was twofold.
Excuse me, could you introduce yourself?
My name's Mike Landers.
Thank you.
The reason I wanted to get up as well is because I'm also not only on the finance committee, I'm also some, I also serve on the municipal light board. And I know that the municipal light board is also an area that I'm sure you have had a fair amount of attention towards. Just as a historic background with it, when we talk about the review thirty years ago, I'm sure Sally remembers this. The reason that we reviewed the Town Manager Act thirty years ago was because of a dispute over how the electric light division was managed. And that actually, what ended up happening at that time is a group of folks believed that the town manager did not have the authority to be able to basically supervise directly with the electric light division. And it was a sort of a wrong element that went into it. And actually, what ended up happening was, is that we strengthened in that Town Manager Act back thirty years ago, the town manager's sort of control over the electric light division. Just personally, I was first elected to the town meeting in 1984, so I've been involved with town government for about forty years. I was the chairman of the planning board, was chairman of the recreation committee, served on the town as a select board member at one point, on the finance committee, and also the town's representative to the Essex Vo-Tech School Committee. How I got stuck with all this stuff is anyone's guess. It's not by choice, I can assure you of that. But thirty years ago, I was definitely somebody who was a very strong voice in favor of the residency requirement, to talk a little bit about that. I do no longer believe in that as being necessary in this particular time. The truth was, is that at that time, I was very, again, much, much like, like the two members of the select board said, skin in the game, I believed it was really important for the town manager to buy his electricity or her electricity from our electric light division, to have kids going to the schools, to play on the ball fields, to use our roads. I don't believe that anymore. I don't think, I think the world's changed. I think that the last thirty years have made a dramatic change. I think the value of what would be a much stronger applicant pool if faced with that choice, especially local applicant pools. I think what happens is, is that when you have the residency requirement, what you don't get are people who are really capable, who already live in eastern Massachusetts, especially in Essex County, because they don't want to sell their house that they've been living in, raising their family in, in some other community in order to apply here. But there are some really good potential applicants that are in that area who we're not going to get. So we're forced to do the nationwide search, right? We're forced to go out and do, or we're forced to take somebody who's already here. So I think you're going to get a much better applicant pool from it. Now, whether or not you folks feel this value in sort of expediting out one particular issue is another, another issue entirely. I think there's a value to that, but I, that's up to you. In regards to the electric light division, I can tell you that the system as we have it right now works. And you know how you know that? Because I'm sure every one of you is one of our customers, and you get basically the best service that you're ever going to imagine for what amounts to basically the lowest price. That's been a consistent process with this. If it was one or the other, if you were overpaying, but you were getting good service, you could complain. If you were, if you were getting crappy service and underpaying, you could, but you get both of them in terms of it. So I would tell you as, as a member of the municipal light board, don't mess with that. And if you're not going to mess with that, probably don't want to mess with a whole lot of that strong town manager component with it. It's served us really, really well for the last sixty-something years, seventy-something years over the course of the four town managers that we have. I have no reason to believe moving forward that that's going to change. As it relates to the Town Meeting Act, which I know is why we're here, although the language in the Town Meeting Act and the Town Manager Act as it relates to the finance committee are pretty much most identical, again, it works in Danvers. It has worked in Danvers. The process that we have in terms of the Town Meeting Review, I think that the process that we have in regards to the town, to the, to the finance committee, doing a really thorough review of every warrant article and providing a recommendation and nothing but a recommendation to Town Meeting. Town Meeting being able to take that has worked really, really well for us. And I think the basics of the Town, the Town Meeting Act, I agree, there might be some tinkering that's necessary to be able to bring it up at times, but the basics of the Town Meeting Act have worked really well for us for about a hundred years. And the representative town meeting is, is really, really good. And especially the numbers, if you look at other numbers, this is worth, this is the right sort of balanced number wise, I would say. I don't know if you want a small, it's, Targa says, in essence, the same, the same legislative acts as we have, but I think they only have like fifty town meeting members. And, you know, you want to do that. Lexington, everyone's sort of looking at Lexington right now. I think they have over two hundred or two hundred and fifty town meeting members, which is really a lot. I think our number works really well, so.
Well, one, one question, Mike, that's come up that we've discussed, is a sense of frustration because we're all town meeting members of, you know, and as a finance committee member, you know, we worked many, many hours on each warrant article and each section of the budget. And there's a sense that some town meeting members come and even some we've seen open their envelopes when they get there, and that there's not a lot of, doesn't seem to be a lot of preparation for a town meeting. Or people, that, that was something that we find is a source of frustration. And we're trying to think of ways to encourage a change in that, a kind of a cultural change of town meeting. I'm not saying it very eloquently, I'm afraid any of you is jump right in. Do you have any thoughts of how that could happen?
So I can tell you that the same thing happened in 1984, when we had far fewer. When I was, when I was first elected to the town meeting, numbers had changed, obviously. They've gotten, they've gotten more. I think that if I remember correctly, there was, there was twelve town meeting members per, per precinct. So not using my Danvers high school math, you know, that's under a hundred members. And you had plenty of members who would show up and open that, that thing up that day, never, never had an idea. The same thing happens now. I don't think, I don't think we can control what somebody who makes the effort to get elected to that committee and then doesn't make a real effort in it does. I mean, that's democracy, unfortunately, in action. But I, I've, I've always been, I've never looked at something that Town Meeting has done in the forty years that I've been involved with it and thought, boy, that was monumentally stupid. And, and I think, again, we're a really well-run town, and it has a lot to do with the people who are at the, in the management, it's the people who have sat up there in the select board areas, it's the people who have served on the various committees, but I think it really is basis on the, the representative town meeting, which has done a really, a really good job. So I, I don't know what you do to, to change those individuals, but I, I don't think, I think they're a smaller percentage than you think, and I think that they played no, virtually no role one way or the other, and they haven't played a role in the forty years that I've been there with it, so.
May I ask?
Yep.
If a citizen was going to scrutinize something in a warrant article, which doesn't happen very often, in fact, I was shocked when it happened at the last town meeting, where I wish you'd change, how would a student, how would a citizen go about doing that? It seems like to me that the town meeting is almost like a rubber stamp of every warrant article. And again, me bringing up the point of representation, comment upon that if you would.
So when I, when I first was elected, David, David Mills's dad was the, was the town moderator. And I was, I was eighteen years old. And he came to me before the, before the meeting. He was, and anyone who knew Frank was sort of a big, rough guy. Frank said, young Landers, didn't even know my first name, if you raise your hand, I will not call on you. You need to spend at least two years learning something before you're allowed to speak. About two years into my, I, there was a zoning issue that was in my precinct, and I went to him before sort of meekly, and I said, Mr. Mills, I've got this, if I raise my hand, he looked at me, says, yeah, you've done good work. That's, that's not the case anymore. Okay? So I do think that there, at this point right now, is a much more, for a lot of different reasons, a much more open process for people. There's a lot more information available to people to be able to, to learn with it. Certainly, if you want to be a town meeting member, you can get to be one, right? So I think in all those things, that's good. In terms of encouraging more responsiveness or, I just, I just don't know what, we're really, I think we're a really responsive community. I think if you want to have an opportunity to be heard, you have a chance to be heard. You know, I may yell at you at a, at a, at a finance committee meeting, but you can come up here and speak. Generally, when, except for certain people who are here now, I don't typically yell.
I don't remember any yelling going on. Have you guys evolved?
I mean, a little.
Thank you for your opinion.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Any other finance committee members like to have anything to say?
So, I see everybody, my name's Ted Blake, I've been on the finance committee, I guess, like seven years or something. Not sure exactly what the number is. But, and thank you for all the time that you've been there. This is an important job that you're doing. A couple of things, I guess, since the, the town manager stuff is, you know, we're kind of talking about that right, you know, right away. Just a few things that, you know, that I would think about here. When we say that we have a strong town manager in the select board, doesn't have a lot of control over him, I, I think in the Town Manager Act, they have the ability to remove him with a majority vote at any time. So to me, that's pretty significant control over somebody's job. And I'm not sure that there's another town in the state where the select board is, is having upper down votes on employment decisions. If there, if there is, I'd be happy to be informed about that. Secondarily, with the residency requirement, I definitely see the benefits of a, of, I think it's quite easy to articulate all the reasons why it's good to have somebody that lives in the community, and I see why people did. Few people spoke tonight about some of the reasons why we might want to revisit that decision. Just for example, what, what Dan said, and I'm not even sure where I fall on this issue, but what Dan said about mortgage rates, you know? I think, Maureen alluded that somebody could be in the money on their house, but if you got a mortgage, a half million dollar mortgage at three percent just a few years ago, that's twenty-one hundred dollar mortgage payment. If you sell your house, forget about what you're paying real estate broker, move here, get a new half million dollar mortgage at seven percent, that's a thirty-three hundred dollar mortgage right now. So that's fifteen thousand dollars post-tax out of your pocket every year. It's real money. Not to mention if we're, this might be somebody who started a family or has a family, this, this might be their first opportunity to get town manager, they've got kids in school and things like that. Those are all things to think about. The last thing I want to mention, unfortunately, is the way that some people in this town have treated our present town manager is frankly despicable. They should be ashamed of themselves and the crap that they put on Facebook and other social media websites. And sometimes in person, it's unacceptable, disgusting. That's it. And frankly, we may have ruined it. Like, you guys think you can act like children all night long on Facebook and it doesn't have real impacts on people? You're wrong. Okay? And I'm sure if I had an honest conversation with the town manager, probably his weight a little bit in his decision, or his, might weigh in his, in his future decision. And I'll leave it at that. Lastly, what was the last thing I was thinking about? The town manager issue specifically? Residency? I think that was it. The, more broadly on town meeting, I, I mentioned this to one of the other FinComers, the, like the level of engagement and information level of people when they come to town meeting does concern me a little bit. Somebody said it might be statute totally determined how many people are in our town meeting, or there might be strict bans, a bit state-driven. But, you know, I do see every year that almost every, in very few precincts are the town meeting seats fully contested, right? It's usually barely, we have eight or six or whatever number. Sometimes there's one extra per, one extra person, maybe two or more precincts. Oftentimes, there's less than, than a, that number of seats that are open. I, I don't think it would be crazy to think about maybe trimming the size of the body by twenty percent. Purely like, you know, if that's, I don't have a strong opinion on it, but if we're worried about the level of information, and, you know, I don't frankly see the difference from a representation standpoint in a hundred and twenty person body than a hundred and forty-four, a hundred and forty-nine person body. Whatever the math works out to eight, you know? If you have twenty-four less, that's three less per precinct or something like that, I don't know. But that's something that might, just a toss of an idea. Two things that I've liked to suggest more affirmatively are, and I'm not sure if this is in the scope, but I think it is, the amount of signatures necessary for a citizen's petition to make it to the town meeting floor is way too low.
Is too what?
Way too low. I think it's ten or twenty, if you guys remember.
It's ten for an annual town meeting.
It's, and, and we've had a lot of time wasted in the last two years by what I would deem frivolous and redundant petitions. I don't, I don't see the value of it. It wastes my time, it wastes everybody on the finance committee's time, but when it gets to the town meeting, it wastes everybody's time at town meeting. If something is important, it should require more than ten or twenty signatures to get it, to, to occupy it, to, to get it for something, in my opinion. And lastly, I think this is a, a little bit of a bigger picture thing. I think that we should think seriously about right choice voting in town elections in Danvers. That's something that was proposed at the state level, lost quite narrowly, I think in 2016. So real, very quickly, though several towns have already adopted it, Lexington might have been, I'm not sure, I can go back and look at the information. But the way it would work is in elections with more than two people running for a seat, you could, you could rank the candidates on a ballot. And that sounds, in first past, that sounds complicated, but the, the best way to explain is, let's say there's one select board seat or one school board seat open, and then two, three people are running. Maybe two people are very similar to each other, or maybe not that similar, and somebody else is way over here, and the two people here split the vote, and the third person gets like thirty-eight percent of the vote. Net-net, are most people in town happy federal come? Probably not. And prob, many of them probably would have coalesced around one or the other candidate. So that's, that's one, one, one bet. It's a way of getting, it's sort of an instant runoff where people, you're forcing somebody to get to fifty percent of the vote to win a seat. The other thing is, I absolutely know people who've chosen not to run in elections for this, for that very concern, that they're, by them throwing their hat in the ring, it would take more votes away than candidate, from candidate A and candidate B. And even though they're not completely in love with candidate A, they wouldn't want to see candidate B win. So they'd stay out of the race, right? I think we'd all benefit from having more contested races. Most, most, most races in town aren't contested. If we can do anything in our, in our electoral process to encourage more people to run and not worry about like second and third order effects, I mean, a so-called spoiler, I think it's something we ought, ought to consider. And really, at the end of the day, hopefully bring, take, take some of that national partisan ship out of what we're trying to do here, which is just for the town. Yeah, y'all be proud of it.
Thanks, that's a great idea, Ted. Thank you.
You too.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Absolutely.
Oh, sorry, John.
You brought up the, uh...
John, could you speak a little closer to your mic?
The, the signature requirements for citizen petitions, have you given any thought to this, the number of signatures required to call for a special meeting? Because a special town meeting, it seems like that ought to be a high number as well.
You know, I, I don't even know what it, that's two hundred, two hundred?
No, that's not many.
Two hundred, right? That's a pretty high, like, you know, I, I don't know that, have we had a town meeting, a special town meeting for a citizen? Yeah. Obviously the, obviously the, yeah. Yeah, obviously the, obviously the, my one, or the, whatever it was. I think it was two. Yeah. I just show up when they tell me to come, like. I, John, I think that's very interesting thing to, to bring up. Two hundred is, you know, I tried to get fifty signature before, it takes a while, it takes work. Maybe two hundred for a town meeting is too low, but I, I, I'd be open to listen to that.
Okay, anybody else in the committee have a question? Any other FinCom members who'd like to speak?
Sally, thanks for inviting us tonight.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you all for your hard work. My name is C.R. Lyons from the Finance Committee. I think my other two committee members articulated things very well. And I would agree that in terms of the Finance Committee articles in both the Town Meeting Act and the Town Meeting Act. Which are nearly identical. They do, I think, define the role of the Finance Committee very well. They keep it a little vague, which I think generally in government documents is what you want. And, and it served the town well for many years. I do want to agree that I think that in terms of the town manager discussion, since we've been talking about it tonight. I think the town manager should live in the town of Danvers. But I do not think that it should be legislated. It should be a best practice. Ideally, the town manager should live in Danvers. He or she should want to live in the town of Danvers. But we live in the real world where that can't always be the case if we want the best possible candidate. So I would urge you to look at that soon because there may be some urgency surrounding the future of our current town manager. And I would even argue that we could probably do something sooner than February second or third. If that was the one issue we needed to gather on and really talk about. One of the selectmen got up here and talked about having more involvement in daily operations. In, in terms of, of role that the town manager currently plays. Because there was concern, I think the phrase was used, we don't want to, you know, hire brothers and sisters and cousins. And I can't help but think of the mayoral communities in this area that have been invaded by brothers and sisters and cousins. Because elected officials are involved in the hiring practices in those communities. So I would ask that select board member to stop and think and say, maybe that isn't the right way. And I would ask you, as the committee charged with looking at our governing documents. To not take that recommendation seriously because I think that would be a huge mistake for the town of Danvers. The town of Danvers runs well because politics is taken out of the daily operation of the town. And that's why county government support well. When Sally sent me the invitation to come tonight and I looked at the two governing documents. I said, well, let me look at the, the municipal governing legislate, legislations. I think it's Act thirty nine of them, ask General Law, Sally, is that right? And I couldn't help but notice that they had to put a lot more h pins on the city stuff. And the town stuff really kind of was taking care of itself because the politics was taken out of the operations. And so that's why I believe in a strong town manager form of government, I think we should keep it. And I thank you for all the work here.
I have a general question about the Finance Committee. Last week when we heard about different forms of government, one that came up was town council instead of a town meeting. And if there's a town council that meets every two weeks or whatever to make decisions that normally the town meeting does. Does the Finance Committee?
That's really, I mean, I think a town council is another way of saying city council, they're calling it a town.
Well, because they still had a town manager.
Yeah, you can still, I, I don't, excuse. But I think in most, you can, even a city, you can hire a city manager, you know.
Catbridge.
Catbridge is a great example. Palm Springs, California, Lansing, Michigan are all city manager. Cities, and, and towns can do the same thing. But you'd be, you'd essentially be, be, be creating in that instance, a city council as opposed, but calling it a town council. There are towns in Massachusetts that are now technically city forms of government that, that they still call themselves the town up.
Well, they still have a select board and they don't have a mayor.
It's essentially acting as a town council because there's no town meeting.
Right.
They're acting as that legislative body as well.
I think what you're thinking of is that one speaker was talking about when she worked in Worcester where there was a city council. It's city council and the mayor. That they could deal, since they, since the city coun, the, the city council met about twice a month. That something could be brought before them more quickly than if you were dealing with town meeting for governments, which has an annual town meeting. You can have special town meetings, so a longer gap of time could exist. She was talking particularly about tax incentives, businesses coming in.
But I think it was a town, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, but I think it was a, a town council, not a city. It was not a mayoral form of government. It was like a select board with a town council as opposed to a town meeting. So it was still, it was still represented by a town council, but not, not a hundred and forty. There was like eight instead. It, it's just concentrates the, anyway, it was just a question about the Finance Committee and whether, if, in that situation, does the Finance Committee still? Show up more often to make decisions?
You know, there isn't really, there's not an annual warrant review, all those things are all, you know, it really needs more mirrors in the city. The couple of comments though, I would say that I've chaired the FinCom for a number of years now and was on it for a number of years before that. And, and commenting on the participation. At every town meeting school, I go and I encourage each town meeting member to attend FinCom. And even looking around this room, I don't see many of you at our FinCom meetings. And I'm sure you're watching them very diligently every night and staying up late with us, turning every page of the budget. But, you know, there are many ways to get the information and many ways to be engaged. And I think you start to call that number down from the one forty nine that will wrap down, including the selectmen. And you, you cut, let's say you cut it down to eighty. You're still going to have, I think, the same percentage of engaged members, the same percentage of disengaged members. Because we, we vote for our friends and neighbors. And some of our friends and neighbors are really engaged, some of them are. And some of them just want to be a town meeting member because they have been and they were engaged for a long time. And now maybe they're just coasting or, or they've got an ailment or.
I think it's the warm up jackets.
That's what it is.
Oh, you guys didn't get them?
The first, the first five town meeting members that come to the next FinCom meeting get the warm up.
Rush.
No, I knew it.
One small bit.
And, and John, you had a question about, about the process about, with the select, what, I think it was answered by a select board member. About, you know, having an issue addressed.
Yes.
You're right. Oh, I, I, I think, and you kind of, I think you were dancing around the idea of, of representation.
Yes, absolutely.
We have at-large representation now on the select board. And, but I think at the end of the day, Danvers, which has grown very slowly over the last several decades. Although it seems like we're growing a lot, but, you know, the numbers would suggest otherwise. I think the at-large positions of the select board served them, served us and them well. Because if I was a select board member living where I live in precinct one, I would still care what happens in precinct two. It's just down the street. You know, it's, it's not twelve miles away. I'm, I travel through precinct two all the time. And your issues are my issues, and certainly if I want to be reelected, they are. And so I think that the at-large positions serve us well. And if we were having more precinct oriented select board members, I think that could be problematic. It would also probably need to increase the number of selectmen and, or select persons. And I don't know that I'd be crazy about that either. But, but I think that if I talk to most of the select board members today, and we have three of them here, they could probably attest to this. That they serve all of the members of the town of Danvers equally. And, and don't favor one particular neighborhood or another.
If I may comment?
Yeah.
That's admirable, but it isn't something that can always happen. You could have three people elected that are all in the same precinct. And could have no vested interest in any place, whether it be because of where they're located or because their myopic vision of their particular work.
But they probably won't last more than that one term. So, you know, at the end of the day, they have to get reelected.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, remember, the first thing we were told by Dan Toomey when we, when we got here was. You can stop counting at three. And I think sometimes people misunderstand how board government works. You as an individual member of the select board have no authority whatsoever. And you never will and you never should. The authority rests in the board and you can stop counting at three, but you gotta get to three to make it work. And that's really been the way it has been since sixteen twenty, when they, the first select board of Salem met. And, you know, sixteen twenty eight, certainly up to the history of this community, whether it was a three member selectmen or a five member select board. It was either you counted to two or you counted to three. And, and that ability to be able to get that consensus on the board is really, really important. And I think it, it bodes people well in terms of how, how we are gathered.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much, C.R. Anybody else in the FinCom want to speak?
I just came here.
Good. Our representative in the state legislature is here. Would you like to speak? Would you like to address what the issues are that we're grappling with here?
A thought or two to share.
Thanks, thanks. Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you. For, for having me. Thank you to the committee, to all of you for doing this very important work. Can't think of a more important conversation than how shall we govern, govern, govern ourselves? So I am Sally Kearns, I'm the state representative for our district. I was a town meeting member around the time you were, and have also.
Much older.
Not much, not that much. So I, I grapple frequently and discuss frequently with many of you in this room. Should we think about becoming a city? I just sort of think about this topic a lot and why? Because I interact with a fair number of communities for different reasons. But Amesbury comes to mind, which is smaller than we are. Gloucester, smaller than we are. There are a few cities, North Hampton, a small city. And it seems to me that there, there are funds available for smaller, for all cities. But you have to be a city to qualify for those funds. I know that federally there are opportunities. And that's not to say that we want to become a big repository of all manner of federal, state funding. But I do look at downtown areas and I think, wonder if that would be a way for, we had Main Street funding, city streets funding. So I think that's important. And I also am aware that when you have an elected council, like the town council concept is interesting to me. Watertown has this. And I, what I don't know is how different it is from select board. It sounds like it is the legislative body of a community. But there is something to be said for district representation. If you live down in Danvers Port or East Danvers, or if you live up near Middleton where I am, there are neighborhood things that come up. There are concerns that impact particular geographic areas. And I, I often wish, you know, maybe, should we have that kind of a, of an arrangement? Would that benefit our community as a whole? Would, would it be helpful to have? I, I get everything from sidewalks, requests for sidewalks. And the town manager has said, I'm sorry, we have many miles of sidewalk and I cannot pay for that. Now, would it be different if we had a town or a city council? I don't know. I'm putting it out though. If there's any group of people to grapple with that question, I, I would say, congrats, you're it. So I just put that up there as food for thought. And I do appreciate the hard work of the Finance Committee. I appreciate the chance to have served on it briefly. And it was eye opening. And my, one of my big tailwinds was how complex our budget is. We're not such a small town. We're twenty eight thousand people. I went over to Wenham and had a meeting with the lovely senior senate director. And we were talking about numbers of seniors and I said, and we were talking about population. And I said, well, right, well, I have twenty eight thousand. And he said, oh, seniors? And I said, no, 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 the, the, the population of my town of Danvers is twenty eight thousand. He's the loveliest man. And he said, oh, no, no, Danvers is much bigger than that. Danvers is about sixty thousand. And I thought that was telling. And so it behooves us to think, what are the mechanisms that work best for the size that we really are? We're not Amesbury, we're not Wenham. And we're, you know, in Gloucester, Gloucester's a city and they are twenty eight thousand.
Thirty two, thirty five?
No, no. So I, I just, that's something I, I often wonder about. And I, I thought when charter review comes up, I will raise that. And I thank you for your service. And I did, was reading and I noticed that all it says as well, planning board, all it says is that the town manager will appoint the planning board of five people. And they will do what planning boards in the state, according to chapter thirty one. Give them the right to do. And that's all it says. And my feeling is that our, I think it would be helpful to our planning board members to have their own attorney, their own counsel. With them, who's not representing a developer or a client, just, you know, there. And not, I don't think we should be relying just on the legal expertise of the person who happens to be on the board. Lucky us that we have some who are attorneys. But I feel that the town is served best by having legal representation devoted just to the best interests of the town. At the planning board. And then other than that, enjoy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Please let me know how I can be helpful as we move.
Go ahead.
The issue that Mr. Bennett brought up at the beginning.
John, don't forget your, your mic.
Sorry about that. The timeline that Mr. Bennett brought up, the potential need for action sooner than later with regards to the residency requirement of a town manager. Could you speak to like the legislative piece of that? Like how quickly things could move if we were, if, if, a lot of this, but if it gets approved by town meeting. And the attorney general reviews it and like, how quickly could, could the whole process get completed?
So that's a very good question and one I have been thinking about. We are still in session. We are able to pass things, we are meeting informally. I expect an eco-development bill, economic development bill, pretty soon. And that will require a roll call because it's a bond bill. And anytime we bond, we must have a roll call. But apart from that, things can move. But like every bill, it will need to be assigned to a committee. It will have a hearing. All of you will come, wait in and testify. It has to go through the process. You know, I guess depending on how many issues are in it, how complex, but it's, it's possible. But are we talking about like, you mean, you mean the board in December?
No, I think we were talking like a town meeting in February.
February.
And could we get legislation?
After that happens, like how much time?
Um, some, no, maybe three months, but gen- Um, some, no, maybe three months, but generally--
But was it the same calendar year kind of thing?
I don't think, yeah, yes. I'm fine. Hang on right now. I want to grab and say. Uh, no, but I, I think that that's a decent expectation. Of course, we begin anew in January. Nothing will get assigned to, to committees, and there's many committees, and that will take, you know, hearings won't start for a while. We will be getting, we'll be beginning a new session, and because we're in this two-year session, I am a little weary of giving you a date, but I will get more information. Certainly, I have something to do something in, in hope within a year. But, you know, I said that about the special ed tuition thing, and lived to regret it. So, of course, we'll fix that. So, I don't know the first of all, but I think it's reasonable that by, uh, fall of next year, you would have at least, you know, depends, it's gotta move through the committee process if you're on one of those. So, I don't want to be overly gullible. Do you anticipate--
We don't know yet. It just was posed to us tonight, the possibility of moving quickly on this one issue.
On the residency?
Yeah.
Requirement? If you, so, I did have a brief exchange with Senator Lovely about this. Uh, I should have mentioned to her, she's coming to the FinCom. She's not convinced that it takes a legislative repair to the Town Manager Act.
Well, it's in the Town Manager Act.
I thought it was in the Town Manager Act that the select board has the full authority to hire the manager and to set the parameters.
There is a residency requirement in the Town Manager Act.
Uh, it's gonna come out--
The question, the question, I think, that gets raised with it is, the, the act basically says that during the term of, of the, the town manager, the town manager shall reside in the town. The question that's always been asked is, is at what point during the term does the town manager need to reside in the town? The, there is a question as to whether or not if the town manager, the, the select board allowed so, would, if the town manager moves into Danvers at the very end of the term without qualified for it, or does the language mean that during the entirety of the term, they have to live there? I don't think there's ever been--
Oh, not even tonight, sir?
Yeah. So, there, there is, there is some considerable debate, I guess you could say, over the, over the, and I know that, my guess is there's never been--
And the challenge--
A case law. There's never been a case law on it because it's specific to ours. You'd have to look it on this. I don't think there's any case law.
And from whence would the challenge come?
Mike Dean.
Mike Dean's on the Board of Selectmen, select people. He's not gonna do that.
Oh, yes, he would. But they would, but he'd never write to. I think he would never absolutely write to be able to say that that, that should be interpreted to mean that you, when you start at the town, you move into the town. I think, I don't know the way it is. I think that there's another argument otherwise, but--
So, if you're talking about legislation very narrowly drawn to strike this particular sentence from the Town Manager Act in nineteen forty-nine, and it pertains only to the town of Danvers, I'd like to think that is not too arduous, and I'd like to think that we, but it is a two-year legislative session, so it's, you know, so it's a whole, it would be a whole rule. And as long as town meeting puts its seal of approval and says it's a whole petition, you know, I think we can expect fairly quick action, and certainly, we're all in jail, so.
Sure, please do. And I was going to ask, and Mike, I should have said, if, if you could come up to the mic, because people will want to hear, I think, some of the things we're discussing.
Thank you.
Be geared to you.
So, what my, Sierra was saying, and semantic, was we can hire a town, he can live anywhere. We, we hire him. He does not have to be here. The question is, when does he have to move to the town? Can the select board have some leeway in enforcing that, and can we just change the way? So, let's not get hung up on where the applicant lives, but we need to tell the applicants his potential, that he has to be here, he has to be here or not. Let's keep moving towards, please.
Thank you. So, um, again, we invited Sir, oh, Mike, I keep asking, is there something in particular you would like to ask of any of the speakers you've heard so far? They're following, okay?
Can I, can I make one, just from a standpoint that Sally, just, uh--
Gotcha.
Again, Mike Landers, the, the issue that Sally brought up in regards to the planning board is an issue that gets brought up almost every year in terms of our budget. It's, it's already, it's already allowed under our current Town Manager Act that the, that the, uh, planning board could have somebody from the town council's office there on a, on a, on a sort of a nightly basis, if that makes sense. Um, I appreciate the fact that there is a concern, a legitimate concern, that any particular planning board takes too much emphasis from the applicant's, um, attorney, and that, that they don't, they don't need to. And certainly, there have been a number of individuals on the planning board who have attorneys there, and, and continue to be their attorneys, and, and Yachir knows this. Um, I do think that the, the, the problem with the idea of having a, a member, somebody from the town council's office there, or giving them, we charge five hundred dollars an hour for that. I'm an attorney myself. If you wanted to hire me, I'd be more than happy to come represent the planning board if the town wants to do it, but I'm gonna charge five hundred dollars an hour, and those meetings last three or four hours. And I'm not, it's, when I'm there, I'm charging you that money. So, you're probably talking somewhere in the range between, anywhere between twenty-five and forty thousand dollars a year to have that individual there for the entire meeting. If you want that, it can still be done. The select board can include that in their budget right now, and the select board could have, could have had that as part of their budget under the, under the situation we have. So, that's something that does not need to be changed in regards to it. It, it's, it's a budgetary issue, not necessarily a, a town charter issue in that respect.
Um, of the, thank you very much, Mike. I've, I've also, uh, been told, and I don't have facts and figures to back it up, I haven't done independent research myself, but that our planning board has very, is very low, um, incidence of litigation and challenge to their, to their work. That's my understanding, but I, I don't, I don't have direct knowledge.
So, it's impossible to sue them now.
So, so, I, again, specifically invited various boards. I appreciate very much your coming. Um, and in our, in our agenda, we always have room for public comment, too. So, anybody else who'd like to speak? But I just wanted to point out a couple of the issues that we came up with at our last meeting about this involvement of, um, uh, encouraging town meeting members to be, uh, more, uh, prepared and involved, et cetera. And a couple of the thoughts that we had, I'm just gonna toss out there, is, um, the period of time between a town meeting member being elected and the first town meeting that they have to attend and be prepared for is very short. And one of the questions we have is whether there's a way to lengthen that period of time to give new town meeting members a longer period of time to review warrant articles, and when that, when, uh, the moderator gives the new town meeting member school. If that, there are sometimes people who are, because of their work schedules or family obligations, can't attend a meeting at a particular day and time, but if that meeting could be available online so that town meeting members who can't attend could, could, um, um, watch that school online. Um, and even possibly to have it be a requirement of a, of any, of a new town meeting member, just as we have to do a, a requirement with the review of open meeting law, for instance, um, or the, um, conflict of interest law. Everybody is required to do it, and you just sign a, sign off, and the, and it's, you know, it's not like a big deal to report that, okay, I did attend online this town meeting member course. Um, we talked about possibly, um, having childcare at town meetings available. Might encourage younger and more families to come. Um, giving town meeting members more training and information about the process, I just talked about that. Um, and just generally, how, how can we encourage town meeting members to be, um, to be more prepared? I think we can kind of encourage a culture of that as part of, as part of the answer. So, I wanted to get those thoughts in. Um, would any of the citizens who are here like to share your thoughts with us before we turn to the rest of our agenda?
Could I do that?
Yes, you have to introduce yourself.
I don't want to kill two birds with one stone. Except we're all town meeting members recently. And, and, and just put your, your, your minutes hat on, because I'm quoted in the minutes, and I, and I also want to clarify what Noah was asking. What I said was--
This is of our last meeting, Jim?
Yeah, the public comment. And it goes to the, the point of the town council format. You know, when we talk about the town council format, we still would have the top, uh, select, uh, select board, and the select board would be the legislo, the legislative board, and the town council would be the, no, 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 the town, the select board would be the, the executive branch, and the town meeting council, or the town council would be the exec, uh, the legislative would take the place of the, uh, town meeting. So, there'd only be eight or nine as opposed to a hundred and forty-four we have now. And so, my comment was basically, we should scale back to ninety-six, which will, which is what we had before, and maybe the next time we, we view the town meetings, uh, we should consider, or at least look at the town council format, and, and if that's the way we want to go, depending on how the, the representation goes. But, but that's what the town meeting, I mean, the MMA people said, that it was the executive branch was the selection. And so, that's how it was. So, whether you have open town meeting, there's one, uh, limited, and then how, how limited? Hundred and forty-four, ninety-six, hundred and twenty-four, way down to the eight, eight, uh, eight, uh, couns, town councillors, maybe one or two at large.
Got it. Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Come on up.
Hi, again, Mark Zubrick, uh, nine Glendale Drive, Danvers, Massachusetts. Former town meeting and all that other stuff. The one thing that surprised me tonight is the request that has been batted around in regard to the town manager residents. That issue was all discussed back seven or eight years ago, when the town manager came. It's ten years ago. Well, it's not ten yet. Well, he hasn't gotten ten years. But the thing is that, uh, that issue was discussed, very similar discussions, very similar positions, and the position is, is that by having the town manager reside in our community, he tastes the actions of what's going on in our community. He participates. He is part of the, well, he's, he's the chief officer and, and, you know, everything else that goes on in town. So, I don't know why this thing came up. I know why it came about, but I don't think this is the time for this group to consider that because you haven't got there yet, because you have a lot of work ahead of you. And I, I will, you know, I will assist if I may later on because I try to stay out of it until you get organized. So, I appreciate your efforts. Uh, you've heard from current selectmen, and now you're hearing from former selectmen, and you should invite other former selectmen because they have endured what's going on with the Town Manager Act. So, that's their suggestion. Uh, both of your current, uh, Board of Selectmen members have, uh, expressed the same issue as I have, that the town manager should be in town, and should, it may have to wait a year after he gets hired before he comes in and resides in the town. So, the, the question that was raised is really, you know, it, it's a decision of the Town Charter Committee. One of the things that, you know, Mike Landers and I have an ongoing, uh, effort in the finance committee, and being participate, participant in the discussions that do happen in the finance committees, and it's a commitment. It's a challenge sometimes to address the finance committee because they get into every little aspect of what's going on with the budget and the water vehicles. So, this is the representation from the community, from the residents that are paying our bills. So, the one thing that I noticed, and, uh, I guess, uh, Mr. Yorowski was one, um, citizens' petitions, citizens' petitions are the direct route for residents that are not town meeting members to address the town meeting, and I have taken advantage of that many times. I get shut down many times, too, but I get the message across of what the residents are feeling and what they need to have done. Finance committee can blow, uh, you know, blow me away anytime they want to, but I think we need more residents involved in that because citizens' petition is the only way. Well, not really, because the town moderator won't let you speak at town meeting when you ask her in advance, and they do allow citizens' participation after the, the, the town meeting members have their discussion and their debate. So, all you have to do is ask. The thing is, people are afraid to ask, and that's what we need to do, we need to encourage that. Uh, now, coming back to Mr. Lyons, um, authority of finance committee, that's been a debate from day one when this town charter was developed, and there's, that's where the give and take takes place. However, not enough town meeting members participate in your discussions because that's where the recommendations are made, and they're made with a small group with a hundred and forty-nine, uh, town meeting members sitting there, pritling their thumbs, they don't know what's going on. So, that's where we need to encourage, and that's where the, uh, town meeting participation needs to improve greatly. Um, Sally Kearns made a comment in regards to, uh, city versus town, and I've made that comment many times at the selectmen's meeting and at town meeting. That has to be considered because what's happening is town meeting is not getting involved enough. Hundred and forty-nine people take a vote, and the town meeting passes a hundred and fifty million dollar budget in ten minutes. They don't know what they're voting on. That's my feeling, and I stick to it. So, that, that's my main thing. You had the MMA discussion, that, uh, the gentleman and the, the lady, uh, town manager, I believe, they were both from the town manager side. You had no, um, presentation from a city conversion, uh, like Amesbury went through a very, uh, direct, um, selectman, because I dealt with them at the time when I was on the wood, and they are now a small, small city in the town, in the state.
Well, I, I, excuse me, Mark, I don't have my notes in front of me, but, um, I think actually both speakers had been involved. The one in Bridgewater, they switched to a city form of government.
Right.
Uh, so, that's the role he was, he was working in that, and the other speaker had gone from working in the city of Worcester to working in a, uh--
But both of them, but both of them were town managers or administrators with a council supporting them. Amesbury is a direct conversion from a town similar to us, 14,000 people. And they converted that 10, 12 years ago. And I've attended their council meetings and it's run very efficiently. There's a mayor. And I had to deal with that because that was the thing I was presenting to them. And that is something maybe we should reach out. And one more thing that I would like to address is I have been doing a lot of a lot of talking about Town Manager Act and the Town Charter Review and everything else over the years. And I've gone through and researched a lot of the Town Charter Review Committees that have happened in our vicinity. Chelmsford, Westford. The communities that are either on open town meeting or an elected town meeting or in the city government. And I have some very good results that I'd like to maybe address them to you later on. But it gives you a lot of ideas of why are we doing this? Because this is very important, and I think you've heard that today, tonight. And the thing is, I appreciate you letting me come and letting me film this because I will have that on my show next week.
Great. Thank you so much, Mark.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Marty.
Yep, just here to do a sort of...
If you don't mind, since my name was invoked, I feel like we're even. I did want to just comment, and I know you have a general understanding of how the finance committee works, but I take umbrage at anyone saying that we shoo them away because I think certainly Sally can attest to the other finance committee. Both Sallies can attest as former FinCon members and the other FinCon members here. And I will disagree with my colleague Ted Legg, who thinks that thresholds should increase. I don't. You know, I think we want to have a true democracy where people can come and, from the minority opinion, and try to persuade us and influence us, then that threshold should be low. And I think I'm comfortable with the 10. I wouldn't object if you wanted to change it, but I'm very comfortable with the 10. But the finance committee, at their hearings, will listen to anyone. At every article, we ask, just like in any other hearing and any other board at this town, is there any comment from the public? And we will let every member of the public speak. We will let them come up and talk about anything germane to the top at hand. If they are the petitioner of a citizens' petition, they can come up and speak. They can pontificate, dare I say, sometimes they blogue. But we will let them do it until they're done. Because they have the right to be heard. And that is one of the greatest things about our town government. And you would not see that in a city government. I promise you that. And Sally and I are going to have a glass of wine later and argue back and forth probably about cities versus towns. But it is where the community... One of the great things about our form of government, I think, is we, the residents, govern ourselves. We hire people to administer the town, but we do the governing ourselves here in this town. And I don't want to see that changed at all.
Can I ask a question?
Natalie?
Are there times that anybody's actually been able to persuade the FinCon to change their mind on something? Or, I mean, I know that, you know, people get listened to, but do they get heard? Or are they just being able to...
Sure, absolutely. I can cite a specific example. Landers is still mad that the historic preservationists were able to change my mind on an article a couple of years ago.
Okay, good.
Of course we listen. And people's minds can be, we can be very easily persuaded. We're not that bright.
Good to know.
You're just dumb enough to have said yes to the moderator. We'll serve on this committee.
We only make a recommendation.
And yeah, and that's the most important thing about FinCon. We recommend. That's all we do. And we'd love to see you in more of our meetings, Natalie. We know you come to that one through the library every year.
Yes, I do.
Do you want to ask me a question, Natalie, or...
Please, come on up.
Is this for me, or...
You guys have this right now.
No, but it's germane to FinCon.
Okay.
In my travels, I have the great privilege and fortune to see many town meetings. What I love about... What I would love to see in my town is the way some communities make use of their FinCon members at town meeting. The tradition in this town has, you know, has always been. FinCon sits silently. It is why the moderator always recognizes FinCon as the unsung heroes of town meeting. For all of that work, there's many, many hours of digging through the budget, learning it, understanding it, picking it apart. In some communities, at town meeting, that knowledge is shared with the town meeting body because they will have, the chair will, using her or his discretion, choose a member to say, I'd like Mike Landers to speak to this article. I'd like Sally Calhoun to speak to that article. And to your point, Mayor Chair, about trying to cultivate more engagement with the substance of our town documents, our budget, that might be a way, that might be a way of bringing in more dialogue around these maps.
Stand right there. If we're going to anger the moderator, we're going to do it together. Well, I would say, I just want to share, I share Representative Kearns said that there certainly have been times where members of the finance committee have felt that they are the only town meeting, they're, excuse me, they're the only residents of the town who cannot speak at town meeting. Every resident, even non-elected town meeting members, are able to speak at town meeting. Finance committee is silenced. And we're only silenced by tradition. There is, we don't need to change it.
It's not a charter, if you mind, John.
Nobody likes to talk more than I do. Do not change that tradition. We have our ability to make those recommendations, to listen. That is our role in town meetings. When town meeting comes, it's town meeting's job. If you want to make town meeting members better, elect better people. It's that simple. It's an election. Get better people to run. Go find better people. Get people who, I don't want to do this idea...
But why keep all of your good investigations in the budget?
We don't have any power over this anyway, so.
Yeah, because it's... Yeah, but it's not, it isn't, it isn't...
Why not share that?
Because I've already shared it. That is the town meeting members' job, if they want to partake in it, to listen to what we have to say. But that's the system. I'm a system person. That's what we do. It's worked. Don't have full tradition. It's, it really, it really is, it really is a situation in terms of this. But it really is. It's, let town meeting do what town meeting does. If you want better town meeting members, vote for better town meeting members.
Yeah, and some of us are of the opinion that there's more issues with town meeting than just stuff like that. So I think it's something that we're going to have to, like, really delve into. Yeah.
Well, and if Mike could have kept his tail in his chair for 30 more seconds, what I was going to say is, we do have a great opportunity as FinCon members. And so I've been very comfortable with what we have now. And I don't necessarily know that it needs to change. But my point is, there have certainly been times where FinCon members have felt of disservice to the community because there has not been an articulate voice coming from other parts of the world where it should have been coming from. And FinCon had really toe the line and carried the water of the other groups that maybe should be. And we've been just hamstrung by our limited ability. That being said, because we have an unprecedented opportunity to research and discuss these articles, that's why we don't speak at town meeting. We've already had our shot. It's just, in a handful of times, it's been unfortunate that we haven't been able to speak. I don't know that...
Just so I can clarify, if I could. What I'm referring to, I've not seen a departure from the fundamental presentation by the article, of the article, by a FinCon member. It's either you reading it, or they might have a member read it. But it's not anything more than that.
Right. And it's our recommendation. But at the end of the day, as the moderator would very clearly say, it's the selectmen's warrant. It's their job to defend it.
It's their budget.
It's their budget. It's their warrant. It's not FinCon's. We just make a recommendation.
Follow, are you going to say something?
Yes. As a town meeting member, when you read the warrant explanation, I think what I would certainly personally appreciate would be perhaps some of that information that, as you said, Mr. Lyons, that you're privy to on FinCon that we are not.
Well, if you want to meetings or come to them, that's where you get it.
And I fully appreciate that. And I would publicly acknowledge that I have not attended one meeting, and perhaps shame on me.
I thought you were there, so I wasn't going to...
But I'm wondering, since the explanation is in that packet, that some of us do open
Right.
ahead of time and do our best to read and reach out to some people and ask some questions. Could I do more? Absolutely. Is there an opportunity, perhaps? And I'm just asking as FinCon, to find out how you would feel about this, to have some of the process of how the recommendation was developed that FinCon is making. Could that be included? Because I feel like that would fill in a lot of blanks.
I, yes, but I think it would. I mean, now we're making a 300-page document and no one's going to read it, right? I think at the end of the day, the thing to do is just watch our meetings. They're recorded. You know?
Okay.
That's, you don't have to come to the meetings. I would love it if you came for the meeting. One of the frustrations I had this past year, there was a FinCon meeting and a planning board meeting at the same time. And all of the typical attendees, Bill Bradstreet, Nova, they all chose to go to the boring planning board meeting. And we only had one, Bill Bates was the only person here. And so we had a de facto 10th member of FinCon that night because there was only one person in the audience. It's actually not good for the process to not have that citizen in court. That's important. That, you know, what might make me reconsider a citizens' petition isn't necessarily the petitioner, but it's that different perspective that gets up and says, well, what about this? That I wasn't expecting because I read what the petitioner had to say. And I was either interested in it or not interested in it. But that other perspective that gets up and says, well, you know, I think that this particular issue, that the house should be blue because, you know, blue's important to the history of the country. Something wacko, but something that might be missed, right? And so that's why I wish there was better participation at our meetings. Sometimes I say, I wish they weren't recorded because maybe then the people would actually show up.
Well, I'm wondering if that's something we consider, that we could require, that there's a way to require a certain number of meetings that town meeting members attend.
And I would go back to my argument for, I believe the town manager should live in there. So I don't think it should be a law. I feel the same way about, I think every town meeting member should be, our FinCon meetings should have to be held in the high school auditorium. I feel. They should have to be because everyone should want to be there. But I don't think it should be legislated.
Okay, thank you.
So, shall we go to our agenda? Thank you all so very much. No, no, I'm not trying to say you should leave, but you're free to if you'd like. So, one point was the minutes of our August 15 meeting. And I know that Dan and Natalie were not there, so they would, they'd like to, what's the word, abstain. Jim Rose has indicated that he was misquoted. Jim, I'm not quite sure. It's on page five. It's on page five.
Where it says, perhaps think about scaling back town members or going to a town council format. It's just that I would prefer to scale back now. And the next time we review this, go in depth about the town council format. That's my distinction. I mean, you know?
So maybe... In the future?
Yeah, town council in the future, scale back this time.
Okay. Is there any other, any other change modification people would like to make? And by the way, you know, it's, no offense to you, Jim, but it's this committee, the members of this committee that are the ones that would say you'd like to modify the minutes. So would you be interested in modifying the minutes in that way?
I'll make a motion to make the change. Second?
Any other changes or modifications, corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion? And this motion, I suppose, just to be clarified, is to accept as modified?
Yes, thank you.
John seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thanks, Mike. I should have taken a vote on the earlier motion, I'm sorry. Motion by John, seconded by Mary Beth to change the description of Jim Rose's comments. So we had a motion. It was seconded. I'd like to have a vote on that. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Great. So we've discussed Town Meeting Act with input from everybody and a lot of input on Town Manager Act as well. We're now getting to be 7:45. And I don't like to keep us behind because it's intense work, I think. And I'm getting old. I get tired after a while. But I was thinking about... So our next meeting, the town clerk will come. And I think you'll find it very interesting to just see how precincts are drawn, what that whole process is. I think we'll learn a lot about it. And we can ask her things like, why are we eight? Why do we have eight precincts? I thought it was in the statute, but I don't see it unless I have missed it. But in the Town Meeting Act, it says it would be divided into precincts, but I don't think it says the number. So that'd be kind of one question to ask her. Why is it eight? And secondly, what would be involved to change the numbers if we wanted to make it bigger or smaller? I think there's maybe a little bit more involved in it than we might have first thought based on my discussions with her. So I think it'd be helpful for us to have her come at our next meeting. Of course, that assumes that we're going to move forward with Representative Town Meeting. So it's kind of dealing with an issue without dealing with the underlying broader scope. So how do you feel about that? Do you think we should continue moving forward with looking at the Town Meeting Act as it is now, talking about tweaking it? What do you think, John?
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile, just so we get our hands, better hands around what we're looking at today and just understanding why we have what we have. I think that's worth doing, even if we veer off in a different direction after we learn that.
I would agree. I think what we heard from several people tonight is, what we have works and it's worked well for a long time. But I think what I'm just still trying to understand a little more is how we arrived there and sort of why it was thought this is the best system. Like, I understand people think why it's worked, but I just want to agree with John that I want a little more of the background about how we rounded the system and sort of how.
And all we can do is ask. I don't know if that's within what she knows, but... And all we can do is ask, I don't know if that's within what she knows, but one thing, in my discussions with her, she was kind of showing me how some of the precinct lines changed a little bit based on this most recent census. And of course, the census happens every 10 years, takes a while for the results to come out, and then a while for that to filter down into actual precinct lines, and how many people in each precinct, et cetera. But the, one of the goals is to follow natural demarcation lines among and between precincts, like major streets, or historical markers. So to bump out one precinct to include another 20 or 50 residents is done carefully and with a lot of thought, because people are used to being in their precinct number. So there's kind of a historic break to making huge changes. That's not to say that's what should be or not, but that's part, I think, that was what I gleaned in talking with her. And it used to be much more important, because remember back when, where you voted, each precinct had a different voting place? So if, like, I voted at the Smith School, and if I happened, if my district lines happened to change, and now I was no longer in whatever district that was, I went to Smith School to vote, they'd have to say, oh no, this isn't your voting place, I'm going to go to this other spot. So that kind of tamps down on people being involved, you know, going in and voting, because now they've got to drive someplace else and so on. So we're trying to encourage, that's the whole purpose, we encourage people to vote. But now, that all the precincts vote in the same location, it's really simpler. Oh, you just go to that end of the gym. So it's not as big a deal as it was at one time. But people kind of, people generally can say what precinct they're from, except for me, I always forget. But anyway, it's, so there's a lot of historic, you know, kind of interesting nuance into the process. I'm really looking forward to her coming. Go ahead.
If you are able to speak to her before the meeting, and I don't know if she'd be able to rustle this information up, but like, when the census changes happen, the number of town meeting members has increased based on that census change over the years. If she could provide us with information on like, why does it happen? Is it a legislative, like, is it a statutory thing that insists on that? If she could help us with that, too.
Okay. It is legislative, that they have, we have to redraw districts with each census, or we have to consider that, yeah.
But like, the increasing the number of representatives in each precinct, that's a question that I have.
Is what you're getting at a question that I have had, which is, it just says it has to be proportional, but it's sort of not more specific than that? Is that, is that what you're speaking to?
The language of the statute says it should be as close to, what's the number?
96.
As close to 96 as divisible by 3, and, but we've gone way beyond that.
Right.
So, why?
Why and how?
Yeah, and do we have to? I mean, because there's talk about, is the town meeting too large, should it be smaller? You know, are we handcuffed so we can't make it smaller? You know, that's kind of what I'd like to know.
Alan.
So I can't be at the meeting, but those were all questions that I was going to send in an email, so, yeah, that's great.
One thing I had mentioned at the beginning was, you know, what actually the, we were kind of commissioned to do, and feeling a little frustrated that we're, have really, we've heard a lot, and it's all been very informative and very interesting and very enlightening, but there are 15 sections in the Town Meeting Act. And if we could have some sort of structure to move through some of those, some of which we might all look at and say, as I wrote down here, no problem, this is good. Maybe not everybody agrees on that, but at least we can knock off a couple things. And I'm just feeling that we're talking about all these different issues that are floating around in these 15 sections, and I just feel that if we could be more focused, we could knock some of those off, and then the ones that require more of our time, bringing in other people, then we can kind of isolate on that particular thing, and then hash it out and decide what our recommendation is going to be.
What about, what about this idea, John? What if, now, our next meeting is only two weeks away, and by the way, it'll be at the senior center. So we're going to be alternating our first Wednesday of the month, our meetings will be here, third Wednesdays will be at the senior center. And I have the dates, I can tell them all to you. I sent them in an email, but I'd be happy to tell them to you tonight. So by our next meeting, do you want to, each one of you, send to me, actually to all of us? I think we can share, we can't vote on something, we can't discuss something, but if I could say, for instance, in Article 3, I think we should change the word "remove" to "move."
I don't know.
Can't do that?
Okay. Because that's still a discussion.
That also gets really-
Seems inefficient.
Yeah, I think it would just get confusing if we get that via email.
I also think that we need to decide if we want to keep town meeting or not. Like, that needs to be our first, before we start going through the Town Meeting Charter, we have to decide if this is what we want. So, I'm just putting that out there. Like, if we, I guess my question is, if we were-
Yeah, I agree with that.
If we came in from outside of this town, if we didn't live here, if we didn't know the history of this town, and we looked at it, how would we think that this town should run?
And what worked 40 years ago-
Doesn't-
That's that very embedded town people who have roles-
In that system.
In the system. So I'm not 100% sure that that's objective. So, as someone coming in that has no, nothing to do with the town-
Right.
Looking at it now, in almost 2025, is it really functioning? And I've been perfectly clear, as a town meeting member, I don't like the way the town meeting is run. I think it's rushed, I think all the important things are at the end, I think people rush through them because they want to go, they've already got the coats on, they've already got the, and we haven't even gotten to the most important warrant articles. So, nobody wants to have a discussion, nobody, and I've felt that for years, that I think all the important things are always saved to the end, and I've been very vocal about that. Yeah, I'm not sure that, and not to say that I don't respect and appreciate their input, however, they're in the system, so I'm not sure that they're objective by saying, yes, it still works. I think, I think having a very serious discussion on, does this form of governance even work before we start going through the document, I think that would be a lengthy conversation, and maybe one whole meeting, just to sort of have a really deep dive into that whole idea.
And I agree with John, I think our meetings should have a little bit, I know it's early, but structure, like, this meeting, we're talking about this. All right, so next meeting, we're going to talk about the Town Meeting Act. So that's what we're talking about, and we're not kind of jumping around to this, that. Also, that's why I brought up when Dan was speaking to, let's rush and get the, you know, residency requirement. We're not even there yet.
Well, they're such a-
Like, that's not, that's not our problem that this is happening right now, and I feel like, why? I mean, it's not my problem. It's going to take at least, at least a year to get it through, if that's what we have to do. It could be two years. So it's really not going to help them right now, and that's why I think the Select Board could make the, well, you, there, you might have to, you know, live here, and-
And also, but you know, it may not have a job in a few years, if we decide to go to something else. I mean, you know, if we switch to a city-led government- Right. Though even, some cities have managers, so, but just a quick, I knew that that was how you were feeling when it was, but you know, it's an insular subject. It's one, it'd be, it'd be easy enough to deal with just that one issue, even when we haven't resolved everything else, I think. Because it doesn't, it doesn't bleed off into the, into other things. And I, just kind of an interesting thought that came to my mind about it is, remember the woman from MMA who spoke to us? And she said, in the town that she ended up working in, there was a residency requirement, but in that town, the Board of Selectmen had the authority to make an exception?
Correct.
Maybe that's a change we could suggest, you know? So many people who spoke tonight seem to think it's important. We could decide as a committee, okay, let's keep it, but let the Selectmen make an exception. Or we could decide as a committee, it doesn't make sense to have that requirement anymore, let's recommend that we get rid of it. But I think we could go, it's like excising a tool where it's all personal, you know, enclosed.
Right. And if we want to do that, like, our next meeting, say that's the topic after, you know, the town clerk presents, and then that's brought up, and then, because it means it's going to at least be a meeting or two, I would think, because you're going to talk about it, then you kind of write, right? Someone's got to write up what it's going to say. And then, I would assume we're voting on sending this forward to a special town meeting, and then-
The urgency of it will be known soon.
It'll be known tonight.
Yeah, so-
Well, it's being voted on tonight.
Before our next meeting, we'll know.
Oh, right.
It's still on the-
Yeah.
So we need to address it. Are we being asked to address it quickly or not?
Oh, yes.
But I really feel that they should not, that we should not, as a committee, allow ourselves to get wrapped up in that.
Again, not our-
I don't, I don't think that that-
Not a problem that's happening right now.
That is not our purview. Our purview is to determine the form of government.
They should-
It still happens that this is coming up now.
Yeah.
But I, I feel that that's going to really misdirect us, maybe, maybe to your point, though, we need to have structure, that's sending us down a road that, yes, is part of our work, but is not the order in which our work probably needs to occur. I'm concerned it's a distraction from actual work that is going to then perhaps be something we have to undo.
Well, in Section 12, if I read it correctly, it's the Town Meeting Act, and I may have, it says, "A change of government only allowed with vote of town at large," in other words, on ballot. I don't think we have any intention of putting anything out there that would happen before the town meeting.
Where, where are you reading from?
Section 12.
Of what?
On the Town Meeting.
Town Meeting Act. I don't see that.
No.
Would it be in Town Manager?
It must be a different section.
The time you would vote, and then the time you vote, we'll put it on the ballot. Completely my understanding.
Okay, that's must be, that's why I'm mistaken then.
No worries, there's so much in here.
My bad.
So does it not go to a ballot?
Oh, you mean Section 14, though, when it was first written, when you changed your form from open to representative, that had to go to a ballot.
Okay.
Just like if we change from representative back to open, or representative to something else, that would then have to go to a ballot.
Thanks for clarification on that, thank you.
I think the rule of town meeting, wouldn't town meeting vote to send it to the ballot?
Yeah.
Right, okay, that's, okay, that's fine.
Right.
I'm not sure that at this committee, I agree with what Fawn said a few minutes ago, I'm not sure this committee should be tasked, tasked with addressing this, what potentially could be an urgent issue to address and change or modify. Our task is to review these old, or original acts of 1930 and 1997, or whatever years they were, were written, and come up with recommendations. I think we've, I think at the start of this meeting tonight, we were handed a hot potato, and we shouldn't have been, and I don't think it's our position to take on this question of whether or not we can change this longstanding rule for the convenience of an issue that potentially could come up in the next several months, or come up very shortly, but impact the town in the next several months.
Well, I'm sure, I agree with Mike, and if the Select Board wants to have that single issue moved, they can do it without us. They can just write one warrant article, call a special town meeting, they don't need to ask us first, and they could do it themselves. It doesn't need to be our topic of discussion. Like, it is within their purview. I'm not sure how I feel about that particular issue, like, as the issue is, but just as a process argument, if we were tasked with evaluating everything, a little emergency situation is their category. We're not an emergency committee sort of thing. So I would see that we could, of course, give an opinion next meeting, but they don't actually need us in that.
Yeah, if this rule is rewritten or redrawn, then we certainly will consider it for the
revised proposal. That's in our purview, but it's, but rewriting the act or the law for the purpose of fixing this potential problem at hand should not be in this committee's purview. That's my opinion.
Well, I think this gets back to what Nova was saying, too, though, like, we haven't decided yet if we want to keep this form of government, and so I think we put ourselves into a corner, if we start going into, well, we're going to change this specific section, but then if three months later we decide, well, actually, that's, so, I just generally think that we have to make some big decisions first before we can start getting into the minutia, that's just my feeling, and I think that we have to, and I don't know when it happens, and I think we need to have more conversation, but I think before we start getting into the minutia of this specific section, that specific section, I think we have to make a decision about, are we looking to make broad changes, or are we generally have, or do we think the recommendation is, we want to keep the system and make some smaller changes, or do we want to look at making larger changes? Because I think if we start sort of picking apart the system, it gets very, you know, I think we have to address, start big, and then maybe get smaller, that's just my take on it. And I agree with everyone else, too, I think it's pressuring us to sort of dive into the weed and the residency requirement sort of handicaps us, because that's taking away our focus from the bigger questions.
Right. And ultimately, we would be making a recommendation on that residency, once we get there, we're not there. And why, why rush to get there? And to your point, Dan, I would think that the Select Board could say, yes, we would like you to live here, and that's what it says, but obviously, if you're having difficulty, I mean, what are you going to do? I don't know. But we shouldn't be rushing.
I can understand both ways, I guess.
If I could offer kind of a strategy, if we were to take up this issue, I mean, because it might be an urgent, and personally, you know, if, if we need to do a town manager search, I think that this is something that would have to be part of the advertisement, you have to live in the town. But if we, if, if we take up this issue, we can report it out in a way that doesn't constrain us. We could report it out as, in recognition of the requests of various members of the, you know, elected officials and appointed officials to take up this issue, we did, but that doesn't mean, that doesn't prejudice where we're going as a committee, because we're not, if, if the timeline that they're talking about is they want a recommendation from us and a vote by the Selectmen warrant for February, we're not going to be done. But I think we can keep our, like, if we go down that path, we don't have to let it prejudice us, and we can report it out in such a way that it doesn't.
It's not binding to our overall recommendation.
We're just acting because of this urgent situation and a request to act on.
I'm curious, is that true that the Select Board does not need, can like, change the Town Manager, or, because that's the Town Manager Act that that's in, right?
Yeah, my understanding is, they call a special town meeting, town meeting approves the home rule petition. Having us is an important step to look at the whole thing, but it doesn't say in there you need to set up a special committee. They just did it because that's the best practice.
Ideally, it would be best if they handled it themselves, in my opinion, and leave us to our, that we have to do.
It could be viewed as them overstepping, overreaching us, like, taking this issue away from us. Like, the town, the town meeting gave this mandate to us to look at these things, and then for the Selectmen to then grab it up and say, ah, but never mind about this piece, we're taking care of that. I mean, that might be part of why we've been asked to do this.
It could be a bad look.
Yeah.
I could understand how us making a position statement would strengthen their ability in a hiring process, but on the flip side of that, there's flexibility in the way it's written already.
How's it written?
It's written, said Town Manager, excuse me, shall not be required to be a resident of the town or of the Commonwealth when appointed, but shall be a resident of the town during the term of office thereof. During, not for the remainder of, not for 75% of, not for-
But they have to move here eventually.
During their contract.
Yes.
If you read it.
But us making a position statement to the contrary doesn't change that. So anyone who's actually seriously considering this position, no matter what we say, it's not changing it.
Unless we take out the residence-
But we're not changing it by February.
Well, potentially, we could.
Right.
Potentially, we could have a discussion next month, as a board, make a recommendation, which potentially could say, we vote as a board to take out the residency requirement.
Right, that's what they're asking.
Right.
But all we can do is make a recommendation, correct?
Right, but then it would have to go to a special town meeting, where then the town meeting members would then have a discussion and- But then it would have to go to a special town meeting, where then the town meeting members would then have a discussion and vote on it. And at that point, it's, if they vote yes, then it goes down the road of the legislature, which then could take more time.
Thank you for that, and I need it to be redirected, but I guess my initial thought that prompted me to say this is it sounded like they were starting the interview, like they were starting the search potentially tomorrow. And so if there are candidates who are serious, I, I don't know what we can do that will change their mind about wanting to be a candidate in the next three months.
There's a home rule petition pending in the legislature. That's, I think the.
But that's February, right?
February would be our potentials.
There's already a special time meeting for the planning board.
They could, but they could call up another special town meeting just for this item. Doesn't necessarily have to go on the February third, it's just that that's already something they have put into the calendar that they know they're gonna have one. If it doesn't happen February third, they can change that date further out. Select member Bennett is hoping that we can have that ready for that meeting.
True, Sally, does anyone here have a problem with this going to town meeting to say that the residency require? Like, do, is there, do we have a discussion here, or are we all comfortable with town meeting deciding whether or not the town manager should be a resident?
Well, town meeting, I think, has to respond to a recommendation.
Right, that's what I mean, like, do we, do, do any of us, what's, what's the consensus here? Do we all think that there should be a resident? Do we think they shouldn't be a resident? Like, what would be a recommendation?
So you wanna sort of take like a straw poll?
Yeah, I mean, I'm curious, like.
We have to discuss that.
There's a lot of discussion tonight, we could do a straw poll now if you wanted.
It sounds like it's past time to get rid of it.
I think, Mike, I don't think it's in our realm.
What, what do you mean?
Right now, to be, to be put into a, a timeline, we have, we as a committee need to tell them what we think about this particular issue. I think it's for them to sort out. Our task is to look at these two documents, review them, update them, as it says in the warrant article, review and update. Review and update and recommend revisions. That's what we're called to do. We're not called to change government, we're not called to take care of this particular emergency which may arise. I think that's in, in another realm, and I think the more we get into that, the more it becomes murky. I think the more it takes us away from what we're called to do through the warrant article.
Right, and, and make recommendations, that, that art, that article is part of a recommendation. Rushing us to make that recommendation is not necessarily something that necessarily I feel comfortable with, however, because they want it now, because we were just handed and assigned this. But I also understand, yes, potentially, there could be more opportunity to have a better pool. But do I think it should be anyone? Not necessarily, I think, you know, some restrictions, but I we should be forced to like get this done right now, like.
I feel it pauses away from the larger work we're supposed to be doing.
And John, I di, I disagree, I know you raised that point earlier, that it's not our job to look at, should there be a different form of governance? I think that's built into the questions that we have.
And I'm not, I, I must be misinterpreting it, but in section thirteen. Of the Town Meeting Act, section thirteen, it goes on, it won't be the first half, cause it doesn't apply to my point. On my point, my possible confusion, it says, this act shall moderate rights of inhabitants of the town's meetings as a right is secured to them by the Constitution of the Commonwealth. Nor shall this act confer upon any representative town meeting in De Anis the power to finally to commit, to commit the town to say any measure affecting its municipal existence or changing its government without the action thereupon by the voters of the town at large using the ballot and checklist.
So that, so that's saying that we can't just say, our committee can't just say we're going to a different government. It means that we can make the recommendation and it goes to the town meeting, and then it goes to.
Clarification on that.
Right, so, so we can't make the decision ourselves, but we make the recommendation that we feel it's in the best interest and then it gets voted on by the lodger.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
But that's, those provisions were when this act was set up. So like if the home rule petition was, let's change the form of government, presumably, they would have something like, but not necessarily.
Yeah, I know that when um other towns have changed the cities, they require a vote.
But it wouldn't. Look, they're rewriting the legislation.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. We could say that they change the government without the vote.
Another century, I can't imagine.
Say that, right, we could say that.
But town meeting would have to okay that, cause that would still just be a recommendation.
Can't say we think you should choose this type of government, we could say, we're gonna, we think you should not have a citywide vote, a townwide vote to change the government.
Right, we could do that.
We could do that.
And town meeting could say, yeah, you're right, we should decide what the, you're right, that is, I mean, that's possible. I'm not saying we should do that, but yeah, 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 of course, yeah, that's it.
And I guess my, if I may just finish, that, that's my point when I initially started, that, you know, there are some, there are certain things within each of these sections that I think we can, if we can at some point move through them, that we can really knock off a couple things that we can come to an agreement on. Uh, and we can say, you know, I mean, this, this one quick one that I picked up here, that, the one of the, I don't wanna keep people here too long, but when they actually say that the names of the residents or people in the district have to be posted. That might have been a good idea in nineteen thirty, but I'm not sure if that's a good idea in twenty twenty-four. So right away, that, that, we could literally accomplish one section by saying, we recommend that this be deleted or however we wanna phrase it, so we move on to another section, and that other section, other sections may include some of the things we heard tonight, which is great.
But do you, but do you, are you? But at what point, after going, spending time going through that, though, do you think that we should have the discussion on if we even agree with the document period?
And tie a document?
This act is based on representative town meeting.
So, yeah, the, the question is, does this even?
Do we even agree with that form of government for us anymore? Is, is I guess what we're talking about to begin with.
So you're just thinking one of our options is to recommend that we change the government completely?
Have that conversation.
I think we have to decide, do we want, like, there's a, the first decision tree is, do we wanna keep strong town manager, representative town meeting? If we say, yes, let's keep that, then so that's like the first thing in the decision tree.
Okay, so, when you were saying, Natalie, about finding out for people who aren't ensconced in the operations, see what, what they think, it makes me think, and I can't remember the name of this type of report, but businesses sometime will bring in an outside advisor to look at their systems and how they do things and see if they're right or not. What, what would we call that?
It's like a consultant, yeah, it's a form of a consultant.
Yeah, I don't know what that, I don't know if that's a.
There, there's a name for that. But I wonder if there is such a thing that's already been done.
Well, again, I think, I think consulting somebody like an Amesbury or a Gloucester that has done it and see how they what was the process, how did they come to make that decision based on what kind of information? Who, who helped them get to that point? Um, and how did they feel comfortable making that decision?
Bringing it to town meeting or whatever.
I would say one of the other things that we discussed last meeting too was just in terms of getting a diversity repaying, cause I think there's value here, there is value here in people in the system because they are the experts and they know how the system runs. But I also agree with Natalie that we need to sort of take down the grain of salt. I know one of the things we discussed last time as well was some sort of survey, sort of directly hearing from the residents in the town. Cause I think there's the outside perspective, I think we also, one of the things we talked about last week was, do our residents feel like this form of government is working for them? Do they find inefficiencies? Do they think that things could be done better, or are they generally happy? So I think that's also just, again, thinking of that diversity of opinions, that we're not just hearing people in the system, but the people affected by the system.
So they just did a strategic plan, long-range plan for the town? Those were outside consultants, um, there were focus groups, community members had input, surveys and all. I am sure we, that, that's a public.
I think I got a copy of that and I could share with all you, cause I, I kind of flipped through it kinda quickly. It really dealt much more with um housing issues, uh.
Services, I think.
Stuff like that, not so much with form of government.
No, but it talks about what citizens are concerned about for our community, where they see our community.
I think I have it um as a PDF.
However, I will add in that um it was, it was represented, it was presented to the um select board last month, I think. And there was not a consensus to adopt the strategic plan that was, all the information that was gathered by this outside council was brought, and the, there was a small uh contingency of select board members there. And it did not get adopted as something we should move forward with.
I think it.
Um, I think it's.
Tomorrow's agenda?
Is it tomorrow?
I believe so.
I think the discovery for that could still be useful, though. Looking at the focus, cause I remember we were in some of the focus groups, so I think there's, I think it could still be useful to look at to sort of see. Cause I think, again, like, I think it was, I forget, I don't, I don't know who, if it was Julie or um, who was the other gentleman? Like, from, from the last meeting, it said, sort of like, the fundamental thing he's always looking at is how is our system of government serving the people of the community? Are they finding that they can get the help they need, the services they need? I think some of the strategic plan surveying probably gets at that of, do people feel like the community is working for them?
I mean, again, to Sally's point, perhaps going to a city, and I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying we need to, you know, in, in thinking about our downtown and revitalizing it, how is that? Because I've asked the question and I've gotten not really any answers. How is our downtown getting revitalized? What is the plan? There is no plan uh right now. So, so under a city form of government, there, there is money to help bring in somebody to maybe start, you know, making a plan on these empty storefronts and attracting businesses and things like that. I, I, I know I had a friend who opened up a business here and had a very difficult time. So are we being perceived as not business friendly? Cause that does get around. So there are things to think about. There are, I think, I think it's a, it's gonna be a discussion that we really need to seriously have and delve into deeper.
I think within the planning department, there is somebody who's, I forget the title, who's.
A, a plan, a, the city planner? Which, which I was told that is not their job to do that. So I said, what does a city planner do then, like?
Maybe for the next meeting, I know we had the speakers, and I know the website's um informative, but the differences between a town and a city, like pros and cons to see it. I don't know if that's a document that's available or one that can be gathered, but just to see, you know, if we went the city route, what, what are the pros to that? Is it more, you know, state funding, you know, federal funding, what does that help? But what is the disadvantage? The disadvantage is less control.
Less control, things like that. But I, 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 I do feel like maybe in the October meeting, I, I would love to have um, you know, pe, people from Amesbury, Gloucester who have done this, come speak or send us a document that we could go over to say, what did you do? How did you get to this point? Who did you use for consultants? What information were you looking for specifically to make your decision on?
And who, which communities did you?
Amesbury and Gloucester did it, and they're, they did it very successfully.
I think maybe, I think maybe we're looking at too big of a potential jump here, if we look back.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'm sorry, I think maybe we're looking at too big of a jump here. I, I think the, the changes that Mike had from Bridgewater that discussed in our last meeting, uh, where they went from a representative town meeting to a town council structure. And, and he mentioned that, that it greatly improved the services and, and, and the uh communication with, with town businesses, for example, because the town council was meeting twice a month rather than once a year. And uh, so I don't know that we have to say, let's throw away the town representative uh form of government and instead of going to a city form, you know, maybe there's a middle ground where we consider the town council form where there's much more uh aggressive and, and frequent meetings that can help businesses, for example, and help revitalize downtown, and, and, you know, maybe that's something to consider.
So pros and cons on, I think maybe pros and cons on a few of the different forms of government would be helpful before we start really deciding what kind we want before we go over a document.
Well, I only, I don't think it's.
So, um, the different maybe cities and towns that have the types of government, maybe they could give us.
Do you think a representative frame is very representative for Gloucester?
Yeah, or, or, you know, or, or, and somebody who has the, the council form that you're talking about, maybe the, you know, like the different cities and towns that have the different types of governments, maybe could give us their ideas on pros and cons?
I mean, I'm, I'm just, like, we just cold call someone from Amesbury, I'm not sure where to get.
No, I mean, I mean, like, the the board up there, like, who, whoever, the, so they do have a mayor now. They did go to a mayor in Amesbury.
Yeah, I mean, but, but we have this resource of the Municipal Association.
Yeah, right.
They, they. Proven source of information.
Ask them to come back, or.
Uh, maybe we just need to look on the website and see if there's some kind of documentation.
Or could they, yeah, could they point us in the direction of where the documents would be?
At least the form, like, at least how the forms or the, the structure is broken down, like, a city has a mayor and a city council, and sometimes they have a town manager, and then the town has a select board, sometimes they, like, at least, not even if it's pros.
Like a flow chart.
That's gonna be based on the MMA's website, the Government One O One, I could try to come up with something.
Like a flow chart sort of for each.
Were we having a liaison from the town to help our committee? Jen said at the beginning that they were looking at someone.
Yep, Jen is uh support, you know, his uh supported some of the things that we've needed to do. I, I, for instance, with the letters to these, I, it's a good day, I sent those letters out and followed up with those people, but I mean, I could ask if, if she knows.
Someone's available to gather the information for us, I mean, I mean, we can do it ourselves, but we're, you know, we're working now, we're committing to two meetings a month, that's four hours. It's a lot of time, I don't have a lot of extra time to do this, nor do I think most of us do. So I'm just, you know, at the first meeting, she said she was working on a liaison, someone to help our committee. And I know other committees have these, so are we getting one or not? I mean, if we're not, we'll move forward, but like, just ask, I guess, go back and ask her again. Was there someone available?
Now, I, I don't wanna forget, or, or, Mike, did we interrupt something you were saying, by the way? Was there something more?
You know, just one thing I wanna say, and I've said this a few times since this committee was formed, and I'm, I'm a little fearful here, and, and it kinda ties in with what uh John said a while back. I'm a little fearful that we're trying to jump ahead to a solution without recognizing the issues and the problems that we're tasked with with, with um, with revising. I mean, I, I'm not sure we should be deciding whether the town council government or the city form of government is, is, is what we should work towards without knowing what in these acts uh seem to, to, to not be working and need, need changing. I, I, I kind of agree with what John said earlier, I think we need to jump into these acts, see what's, what's good and what's working, what doesn't need revision, and then uh, you know, take, take the next step from there. I, I, I don't know that we should be jumping ahead, to me, it just seems like we're jumping to a solution without understanding everything between the starting gate and the finishing, finish line.
I can, I can appreciate your point, is one of the reasons, one of the ideas that I had was that that we would start, in the packet of, of materials I handed out tonight. And Mike, I will email the set to you, I should have done it before, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No problem.
I included the list of um.
Committees at the end? The last page, yeah.
And the list, actually, the second and the last page is. And the list, actually, the second to the last page is, uh, positions appointed and hired by town manager pursuant to the current Town Manager Act. And then the list of boards, commissions, committees. And I was thinking that maybe one of the things we would do is start asking, for instance, people from the planning board, municipal light board, uh, start allocating certain nights to hear from those places to see, well, how is it working? Are you running into problems? Is the way they act now posing problems? Do you see a better way to do it? Thinking, as you were saying, Mike, finding out, well, what is, what's working now? Are there problems now before we jump into the question of, let's make a big change. And just as, for instance, I was thinking that next time, I, I thought the town clerk could come to describe the stuff I've told you, but that maybe then we can also at that same night ask the, um, like, the, uh, town treasurer, tax collector, and there was the assessors to come in and talk about how the Town Manager Act impacts them. Is it a problem for them that they're appointed by the, um, town manager? Is there a way they wish it would be instead? Because just as, for instance, remember when we were listening to the speakers from the MMA? The, the woman, uh, was telling us that in, in her community, the town clerk is elected, but the person who's in that function wishes it wasn't because there's so many, um, qualifications, uh, so many education matters that she, that that person needs to have under their belt. It'd be better if it was an appointed position instead of elected. So, I mean, we could ask these people when they come in, how do you feel about your position being appointed? Do you think you should be elected instead? Do you wish it was a different chain of command or communication? So, so that was kind of where I was thinking we would go. Once we got these people with input on Town Meeting Act to next turn to Town Manager by calling in boards, commissions, people filling in these roles now to say, what do you think? Is it working or isn't it? Um, but if you don't want to do it that way, if you feel instead we need to do the big, bigger existential question, should we be a city? Or should we say a town? Should we be a town council form of government? Should we get rid of town meeting altogether? Should we go back to open town meeting? I mean, we can, we can kind of go about it in the order that all of us think is best, but the way I thought we would proceed, that, what I was kind of aiming for is after tonight, have half of our next meeting be town clerk and then move to a couple of the positions to start inviting people particular nights. On this night, we're going to deal with this and we can make it part of our public meeting, who's being invited. So people are interested, for instance, the night we asked planning board. People who are interested in planning board will know, oh, that's the meeting I want to attend because I have something I want that committee to know. But it's hard to know what order to do it in.
I just hope that people feel safe to speak honestly and freely. But, but more so honestly, without fear of, oh, so now I'm going to be kicked off the board or now I'm going to be, you know, I. And also not get into any personnel issues or things that we really can't delve into.
That's right.
Yeah.
I, I would, uh, second Mike's idea that, um, if we go through these sections, et cetera, and then issues will pop up. And we, they may be major issues and they may lead us down the path of looking at the whole, the whole big picture.
Hmm.
I, 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 that's what I would, that would be my preference. You know, and maybe we go through this and it says, you know what? It's not as bad as maybe it's made out to be because we've gone through each of the sections.
Mm-hmm.
But maybe on the other hand, we see all these kind of things that just don't make any sense anymore, that are problems in the town. Now we probably blow the whole thing up.
And I, sorry, excuse me, I, um, I appreciate you bringing us back to that because I think it also helps ensure that we're requesting input from the people who know frankly more than most of us, certainly more than I do about any of, of these questions. And so we're soliciting their input and, like you said, I think people will hopefully see, oh, planning board.
Mm-hmm.
I have an opinion about that. So we're also kind of meeting our goal, hopefully, or at least trying to meet our goal of soliciting public comment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it may, it may direct us toward a decision of that larger picture, but I, I don't know how we make that decision about the form of town government until we do that. I'm, I'm feeling that way now that you've said that.
The, the, my original thought was, let's start by finding out how, how our town operates now. And I think we kind of need that information before we can decide, okay, now we need to make a change. But also knowing the various forms of governance out there, for instance, if we switch to a city council, well, what does that do? Does that mean the planning board no longer exists? Does that mean the municipal light board goes away? I mean, what, what happens then? You know, th- those questions would, would come up, but I think first we need to understand what we have now. That's where I began, but I am certainly open to suggestions that, no, let's not go that way, let's do this instead. I don't want people to lock in just because that's how I began thinking of the structure, at least of our initial meetings. So what, what you were going to say, Dan?
Um, I kind of agree with your perspective, Madam Chair, and what John was saying about the, you, you need to know if or where there's a problem before you come up with a solution. Um, and I would see that as being beneficial to, I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of jumping into a city government unless that was sold. I might have one perspective and have to use you as the other example, Natalie, another one, but I think that process would help people who might be coming with both perspectives. Um, by going through step by step, it's, we might be able to accomplish the most minimal changes with the best results. Or if at the end we decided a giant change, you'd have the entire record of evidence and problems and, because trying to sell town meeting on a big change, I'm unsure of that success.
Mm-hmm.
But you'd have a case built if that was what this committee decided to do. You're building your case with each person you talk to, um, in order to try to like be persuasive and sell it. So I, I kind of think that helps both angles or potentially depending on what, I guess it depends on what's found.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that, that, that system might be good.
Noah has very kindly written up a little blurb describing our committee and its work in hopes that we would give it to Jen Breaker, who's the, uh, like the communications person for the town, who, she says, you know, every, every Monday, is it? Or is it every month? She posts all the meetings for the week and sometimes in that posting will give a little blurb about one particular committee or board. And so Noah drafted something. Do you think if we pass it around, everybody could take a quick look and, and say, yep, let's do it? Or is it going to be more, do you think it needs more time than that?
Um, I don't know. Well, let's take a quick look. And I think if people think it looks okay and are ready to just give it a quick up or down, but if not, we want to have more discussion, we can discuss it next week.
And while we're passing that around, for our next meeting, again, we're going to have the, uh, town clerk. Should we also ask for, uh, is, is there another board in this list of town meeting of positions appointed, hired by town manager pursuant to the current town manager act? Should we pick one or two more of these? I think planning board is going to be big. Um, maybe town treasurer and.
Yeah, one, yeah.
Town treasurer.
Yeah, because they kind of.
Uh.
Yeah.
Treasurer and taxes would probably be hand in hand.
Yeah. Town clerk, town treasurer, collector, and what was the other? Assessors? Should we ask for all, for those four entities?
Hand in hand, so we might as well.
Okay.
Which, what's the date of the next meeting?
Um.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
The eighteen.
The eighteen.
It is, uh, Wednesday, September eighteen at the Senior Center. And I know that Mary Beth and Noah cannot be there.
I can't be there either.
Yeah, this is regarding the section that says, this is regarding the second says, two room at Danvers Town Hall. I would update that for Jen to have the correct location.
I'm sorry, what?
That I wrote in the, in the second to the last sentence, I say, meetings take place the first of the Wednesday of each month, six to eight, the two be room at Danvers Town Hall, but if this should be for Jen to post before September eighteenth, I would update to the correct location.
I like that you have the link to the agenda website. I think that that is a, is a great thing that was for, for, um, I don't know, I would say like transparency, but also just that people can click and see the list of
Yes.
what's going on.
Right.
I think one thing that I might change is where it says, that the committee will determine what, I understand that, that thought here.
Or make a recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We'll make a recommendation.
We'll recommend.
Yeah.
Another thought that I reacted to right away based on John's persistence with, with this tonight is, um, you know, you say that during the May twenty-four town meeting, um, town meeting members voted to create a citizen-led committee that would review the town's governance structure and
It's not structured, right.
It's, it's more to, to review the, these two acts. I mean, I think I'd, I'd put it that way, the Town Meeting Act and the Town Manager Act, because that's how the vote.
Yeah, I think where I was thinking with that is, because I'm trying to do this in a really plain language way.
Yeah.
Those two documents are the structure of our government. It's kind of what I was thinking. Because I think we're, I think the, if we want people to come, I think we have to put it in really clear terms versus just the documents. So maybe we could say, review the documents that determine the town's structure.
I think that's better.
Okay.
I like that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get like a people.
Otherwise people are going to go, oh, snooze fest, I'm not going.
Documents could be.
How could anybody think there's a.
Very exciting.
But yeah, so like, would review the documents that, okay, that makes sense, yes. Because I agree with you, it's not the, yeah, okay. So that's where I was heading with that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, with those changes, that's great.
Okay.
It looks really good.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thanks. Would you like to forward it to Jen or would you, I think Noah's probably better, is communication from our committee should come through.
Right.
Through me. So you just make those modifications, email it to me and then I'll forward it to Jen.
Okay, perfect. I can get it.
And I will also try for every, for those who cannot attend our next meeting to assemble the handouts and email them to you in advance too, which I should have done.
Thank you, because I'd love to send some input, you know, um.
I might be able to have the meeting, I might just be a little bit late because we have an event, I have a work event in Toppsfield, but. Sally, you're.
So, sorry.
Very disappointed if you didn't.
Yeah, exactly. I take it from the beach.
It's going to be Ben?
No, I'm going for my niece's wedding, so, yeah, looking forward to it.
Okay. Thank you also very much. Should we have any kind of motions?
A motion to adjourn I am making at this moment. It's eight forty.
Eight forty, eight forty. So Natalie moves. Okay, two seconds.
Second.
Well, I mean, it's already been, it's like four people.
Dan, Dan did it. He did it first.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
It's all in reaction.
Thank you all very much.